All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for attending the city council meeting. This is a regular city council meeting, so the rules of decorum are in effect, and I'll give you reminders throughout the meeting. With that, 5:30 PM, the meeting is now in session. Please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, let state, under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. City Secretary, we have a quorum this evening with all members present. Proof of notice of meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Notice of this meeting was posted by 3:00 PM on Friday, August 2nd.
Okay, thank you, City Secretary. All right, City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. Public hearings. If there's anybody here to speak on a public hearing, you'll have three minutes. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your ward. Please remember that council cannot respond. We are starting public hearings at 5:31 PM. Public hearing A to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the 2025-2029 capital improvement plan. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing B to obtain citizen views and comments regarding Resolution 2024-08-04, a resolution amending Appendix B building service fees, setting the rates and fees for city building services for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public hearings at 5:32 PM, City Secretary. Moving on to public presentations, presentations and recognitions, there are none. Proclamations, we do have a proclamation this evening of National Aviation Day on August 19th, 2024. Abel, if you would come forward, please. Whereas, in honor of contributions to the growth and advancement of the aviation industry, President Franklin V. Roosevelt proclaimed August 19th to be the National Aviation Day. Whereas, National Aviation Day is celebrated across the United States as an annual national observance that honors the development of aviation. And whereas, the aviation industry has continued to grow and advance and is critical to our economy and our way of life. And whereas, individuals, families, businesses, government agencies rely on air transportation to get from place to place, move cargo between businesses, to keep our borders secure, to control wildfires, to support agriculture and more. And whereas, City of Alpine and the Alpine Kispares Municipal Airport employees encourage and support the aviation community. Now therefore, I, Catherine Eves, Mayor of the City of Alpine, Texas, on behalf of the community, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that August 19th, 2024, as National Aviation Day, and encourage all citizens of the City of Alpine to learn more about aviation in our city and to recognize the contribution of the hardworking professionals who support all sectors of this vital industry and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand the sixth day of August in the year 2024. Thank you, Amy. Okay, moving on to community interest items. City Secretary, please put one minute on the clock for each individual's comments. Mayor announcement, I have none. City manager?
Two announcements. I just want to remind the public that Tuesday, August 13th, is the first day back to school. So please be mindful when you are out driving around or taking your children to work. That is also the time period that the new estimated start date for the TechStop project of redoing Highway 118 coming down Fifth Street. Everything is very tentative right now, but please, once again, be mindful of your driving. This will be a work zone and school zone.
Thank you. All right, so one minute for each member. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to bring everyone's awareness that y'all know I am a gun safety champion and just this past Saturday is unfortunately the third anniversary of the El Paso shooting. A 21-year-old, he was inspired by far-right extremist and racist dialogue, a lot of it from state leadership as well. It's where he said he got his ideas. Drove to a El Paso Walmart 10 hours away from his home and killed 23 people. In light of that, I also want to note that I'm deeply disappointed in the Alpine Lions Club continuing to try to work with them to bring background checks to their upcoming gun show. As of now, anyone can show up at that gun show at a state university. They can be a felon and they'll be selling guns to felons on the same day. And just breaks my heart. Thank you again for the time there.
Thank you. Okay, one minute for councilmember Alabas.
I just want to inform the community that this Saturday, the 10, Ever Salon is going to provide free haircuts for all the kids who they go back to the school. You don't have to make an appointment, just come and sign up and whoever they're coming, they they will be getting. Any age is just to show that they are students. I read it in Spanish. Este sábado van a ver cortes de pelo gratis en Eva Salon para todos los que regresan a la escuela. Nomás tienen que venir, no tienen que hacer cita previa. Ahí los esperamos.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, one minute for councilmember Nance.
No comments.
No comments. One minute for councilmember Escobedo. Okay, one minute for councilmember Stevens.
Three items. First is, in addition to back to school, August 13th, Saul Ross opens up first aid glasses August 25th, and the dorms are going to be full. So enrollment is doing really well. And I've got more detail on that for whoever's interested. I want to thank you know, the Eddie and the Road team for all the great work they've done out at Alpine Country Club Estates. Having done a lot of work on Kennavon Cable, Carrito, Mingo, and Logan and Six Nick and Airfood. So Megan, thanks for helping make that work and for Eddie's team. The last thing I want to thank is again Eddie and the Police Department for getting the stop sign up on Avenue B. Because with Saul Ross opening back up, getting that flashing stop sign up there, which I bought, but they put it up. That should hopefully slow down traffic on Avenue B.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to changes to posted agenda. Items to be continued or withdrawn. Are there any council? Okay, seeing none. Items to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion.
I'd like to remove items E and F for separate discussion.
E and F. Okay, and that's by a simple request, so we will remove items E and F for separate discussion. Okay, action items to be added to the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. Calm sensitive items. Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the consent agenda. City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have item A, approval of July 16, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the appointment of S. C. P. that sued the Gonzales to place two hotelier position on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. Item C, approved the excused absence of Councilor Nance from the July 16, 2024, regular city council meeting. Item D, approval of the excused absence of Councilor Stevens from the July 16, 2024, regular city council meeting. Item E, approved Resolution 2024-08-01, a resolution approving the renewal of the city's telecommunication and broadband contract with Big Ben Telephone. Item F, approved Resolution 2024-08-02, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 health reimbursement arrangement managed through Total Administrative Services Corporation. Item G, approved Resolution 2024-08-03, a resolution amending Appendix C animal service fees for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. And item H, approved Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Cyberliability and Data Breach Response Interlocal Agreement.
Hey, council?
Approved the consent agenda, less items E and F.
Thank you. I need a second.
I second.
Okay, let's vote. City Secretary, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously minus items E and F. Okay, moving on to items E and F. Councilmember Nance?
Okay, to discuss item E, the Big Ben telephone, I see that is 77,000. I was just going to say, Big Ben Telephone, great company. I have no complaint at all on that. I was just going to ask Megan, is that for phone service, internet service, and I guess IP managed services?
So yes, so it is for our phone service or internet service. It is for our network management. And we do have a service agreement with them that allows for so many hours of months for them to come out and make any repairs that are outside the norm.
Yes, SLA.
Yes.
And then on that, I was just going to say, how long have we used them?
We have used them since 2017. We had an initial five-year contract. We went back out, we went with them again for a three-year contract, and renewed for one year. In discussions, we felt that we didn't really need to go back out for another RFP. We are allowed to renew year to year, so we're requesting to renew for another year.
And if we extended the contract up at three to a five, does that require an RFP, or can we just do a simple renewal?
Because we've already exceeded the initial terms of the first contract, I would recommend doing the procurement and going out.
So a one-year renewal is simpler.
For right now, but that doesn't mean that if we want to change our services, reduce or increase, that we wouldn't take that into consideration as part of the request.
Okay, that was where my mind was going, is could we get any discounted or an extended contract? It's a great company.
Our initial contract with them was for a little over nine grand a month, and now we're down to a little over between five. I say Spectrum has called a couple times. AT&amp;T, I think it's just an automated generated email because we use to be on their services. BBT is a local company that has provided this.
Okay, any other discussion on item E? I need a motion to approve item E.
I make a motion to approve item E.
I need a second. Let's vote. City Secretary, consent agenda item E had been approved unanimously with all councilmembers voting in favor. All right, moving on to item F, councilmember Nance.
So this was the, I'd never heard of a health reimbursement account until being here. Coming from the school, we had HSAs and FHAs, flexible spending accounts. The whole reason I mention that is the city spends $45,000 a year on this HRA. Where my mind was going is if it would make more sense for to get feedback from the employees on if they'd be more interested in like an HSA. I saw an HRA is run from the employer side, but an HSA is actually runs from the side of the employee, so they can carry it with them. So if Johnny or anyone else actually starts an HSA, then they can carry it with them to another city or anywhere else, or private or anything else like that. But it requires high deductible health plan. Do we have a high deductible health?
No, we have an average deductible health plan. So our health plan went preventative. Just to get you a complete background on this, this is 100% sponsored by the city, so we contribute the 500. The 44,000 is if everyone spent every dime. That has never happened. And then, of course, when people leave, they lose that benefit. I think that would be a great opportunity for discussion for the next fiscal year to be implemented in '26, if that's the direction they want to go. Because then the city wouldn't be providing those contributions. It would be on the employee. The feedback we did receive in regards to our health insurance is that they would like the city to cover more of the we already cover 50%. We are one of the only entities in the area that does that. So this is another fully funded benefit for the
So we're heavy on benefits, lighter on salary, heavy on benefits. And that's where this, my mind goes with this, is with an HSA being flexible, portable, if an employee didn't spend that $500, then they could actually go and we could put $500 on their check if they were doing that, and they could put that into the HSA if they wanted to, or not put it into the HSA if they wanted to. So it would be a way to raise salaries if they wanted to. That's like 42 bucks a month. Not a lot, but it is.
I know when this was implemented, it was because we were trying to get our employees to take advantage of insurance. This all came about because we did have
Any other discussion?
I have to say that I think, you know, having public employees are looking for very good health insurance and other types of programs. So I'd be worried if we have a high deductible program, especially with a lot of our pretty low-wage employees that, you know, it's hard to cover a 2,000, let alone a $4,000 or $5,000 deductible in any given year. I mean, that can become a fifth of your salary, if not more. So I'd be cautious in removing any types of benefits like that.
Any other comments?
Just, it's two bits an hour. Not a lot.
All right, I need a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda.
So moved.
I need a second. Okay, let's vote. City Secretary, all councilmembers voted in favor unanimously to approve item F on the consent agenda. Reports and presentations, there are none this evening. Moving on to information and discussion items. The first item belongs to the city manager. If you would read that item and start the discussion, please.
This item is to discuss the property tax rate and appraise value for tax roll for this upcoming fiscal year. On July 24th, the appraisal district did provide us with the 2024 certified estimated values, which also included 134 properties under protest. They're estimating that at 43,654,728, that 60% of that will be lost, which roughly, and I don't know how he got his numbers, is $35,223. The total taxable value not in protest was 490,460,380, compared to our 23 taxable value, which was 494,156, 494,156,816. Lots of numbers. I was hoping to have more information to have this conversation. In light of conversations with some of the other tax entity entities, we have become concerned with some of the reports that are being provided to us. There, it has been significant turnover at the appraisal district and accessing some of this information is new. We do understand that when they run these reports, they have to ensure that they include everything that belongs within that entity. For example, what the county has far exceeds our city side because we don't have some of those additional exemptions or properties outside our city limits. So as of yesterday, I had requested updated paper documentation in order to do our truth in taxation, which actually sets the tax rate. So when you look at these numbers, the truth in taxation requires the 2023 appraised values as of the date requested. Those were requested on July 26. As a result, the first report was identical to what was provided at the beginning of 2023, which we know wasn't an accurate report because during the year, there's lots of things that change, exemptions that get granted or modified, properties that get added or subtracted. So we requested an updated report. I know that the appraiser has been working diligently with not only the software company, but with a mentor-type individual to help us get these reports. As of yesterday, I reached out to the tax assessor Sylvia Vega to see what she had received. Just for kind of clarification, when it comes to setting the tax rate, Sylvia sets our tax rate based on a 20-page step-by-step calculated formulas on not only what is appraised in '24, the values of '23, but the city in 1988 also allocated part of our sales tax to reduce property taxes. So that has to be considered part of the formula. Usually, we try to work at the same time so that whatever she comes up with, I'm verifying, and whatever I come with, what she's verifying, so that we're both on the same page. Because of the questionable reports that we received, I've asked her to go ahead and move forward and utilize one set of reports to complete the truth in taxation form. And then I'll go back in and verify what he's put together to see if I have questions in regards to where some of the information is coming from. She is currently working on the county's tax rate, and then we'll address our tax rate. I know that they've also brought in Betty Jo Rooney to assist as well, but because the reports have been significantly different, I don't want to utilize what I currently have if it's not identical to what Sylvia's working. But you'll notice that there is a change in our evaluated values, which is why I think some of us are all questioning it. Across the board, it was a 10% increase on appraised values, but based off of the documentation that was provided, it's not a 10% increase. But we know that last year, and I did speak to the appraiser, that I'm very nervous because last year we went in with, you know, we knew we were going to get cut a little bit, but we got cut 100-plus percent. So not only did we lose all the protest values, we lost an additional amount because they granted an even lower value. I know that they're trying to do it differently this year. It is up to a three-member review board. So every day, as they go through the protests, our values start to change. So once again, I'm going to work closely with Sylvia, make sure we're using the same numbers, so that we're not going back. But I wanted to give you at least some information. I was hoping to have a tentative tax rate, but it's all dependent on our 2023 values, and I, I don't have exactly what Sylvia has.
Councilmember Alabas? Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Stone?
So I'm no, no tax expert here, but I'm looking at some bottom lines of like net taxable income comparing '23 to '24. It looks like, just on our estimate, and I understand you said that some of these numbers might not be right. But it looks like we are lower than last year, and I'm wondering where that's coming from.
That's where we're all wondering.
Yeah.
So we're not sure, and I know that everyone's kind of on a learning curve at the appraisal office.
Sure.
I know that one of the reports didn't include what was considered the rolling stock, which is the railroad's property values. That does affect the county. We're not sure the impact on the city. Like, so we're questioning the same thing you just brought up.
Yeah, it's also seen like those non-home site. I'm guessing that could be some of what you just mentioned, like railroads and stuff like that. That would probably be really important because it is commercial and it's going to be rolling over from year to year, and I would guess that that value would go up in some ways.
I do know the school district is also questioning it because the solar plant hadn't been included, and that is now on the tax roll. Doesn't affect the city. But we're seeing these little discrepancies from each of the taxing entities. So we are all kind of questioning the same. Is this report what we need to go forward with, or do we need to?
And, and who's on the job making sure we get the right report now, or?
So I, I am.
Yeah, yeah.
And so because I only assist with setting the tax rate, I am not legally allowed because I don't have that specific training. Sylvia sets our tax rate. So I'm making sure whatever she does, I like to verify it because sometimes we find each other's little mistakes. Because it's like I said, it's about a 20-page formulated step-by-step document. So I'm going to wait till she is done with the county and is ready to put her full attention to the city. And then we're going to utilize whatever report she pulls from that date.
Cool, and just not to jump in too much, but are these Excel docs, or are these like?
No.
Set up like this. Okay, so we can't put column A, column B, and see which numbers are different. We got to go through, highlight them.
And the TNT is also, which is the truth in taxation, which sets our tax rate. That report is a non-fillable, so that is also manually. And then we have our calculators.
Sure. Okay, cool. Two weeks, we'll be seeing something different, hopefully.
I'm hoping sooner than that because this is really important. There's going to be another tentative item on the next agenda, but there will most likely be no supporting documentation because of the deadline. But I will keep you guys informed via email so that you can see. I have an internal spreadsheet because we have four different methods in which to determine our tax rate. So I like to do a tax or a separate spreadsheet so that I can do comparisons. I'm just really waiting on Sylvia because she is the one who legally finds all columns.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Two questions. So Megan, when will the ARG and Freedom of Bits?
So as of yesterday, when I spoke to the chief appraiser, we had 134 properties and our new was 92. So ours seems to be going down. Overall, they had about 500 left.
And Darren, you are a representative to the Brewster County Appraisal District Board. What's going on? I hear lots of changes because I have properties at a number of locations, and I hear lots of stories about what's happening in Brewster County.
I have missed the last meeting, being on vacation, but the previous, I think it was Raymond Herrera, our previous chief appraiser, was Denise Flores, replaced by John Herrera, who left Alpine, and he's found a pay risk for a pay raise. So we're in a transition with another gentleman. The other gentleman is younger, so I think he's learning quite a bit as he goes, and he's also getting mentored by Mr. Petrie. I think there is a gap in there as far as like compression in time and kind of trying to get everything done under the mentorship of Petrie as well.
Okay, and Richard's good on that expression.
Thank you. Councilmember Nance?
Couple things, Megan. If you would just discuss, just so the council knows, the exemptions offered by the city. Tax exemptions.
Homestead?
We, no. We, we do not offer the exemptions like everyone else does. We do not have a homestead exemption. We do offer the over 65 and veteran. I believe those are the only two. We don't offer any others.
Those are state mandated, right?
Yes.
Over 65 and veterans? And then?
I know it's on a website somewhere. I was just trying to let Councilmember Nance know where my memory won't. But I know I saw it on a website.
I think it's important for people to know that we don't have problems there.
So actually, within the reports themselves, the only ones we have is the disabled veterans and the over 65, and those are actually outlined within our certified values to show you what those are. The values are there being
And then looking at that, from 2023 to 2024, I am seeing the report we had split it into properties under protest, protest values and the gross amount. And the assessed value last year was 548 million. This year's 587 million. So it has gone up. And the next taxable, net taxable value was 494, now it's 530. So about a $36 million net taxable amount, but that could be under protest and everything else. So I couldn't make complete sense of what we're actually having here, and I can almost guarantee you that the values are going to go up because we know values always go up until they don't, and 10% on the home side and up to 20% on the commercial side. But that was everything.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, moving on to discussion item B. This is councilmember Stevens.
Thanks, Mayor. In your black folder, Megan handed out in your discussion about the Alpine Comprehensive Plan, which we follow. Couple, three meetings ago, we had a discussion about the comprehensive plan, and what Megan and I did is put together a document we thought would be worthwhile sharing with you all. In my mind, this is about education, about what is the comprehensive plan, what are some of the benefits? And I thought I'd walk through some of the highlights this evening, if there's some questions. My sense is, when we all walked away, we thought there was value in doing a comprehensive plan. Why? It's about a long-range plan for the city to capture the vision about where the community wants to be in the future. It's about doing the analysis and evaluating future growth opportunities, and it prepares us for future development as we think about grants and other things we want to go after in terms of bringing the money. The benefits of the plan, item two, provide Uh, the benefits of the plan item two provides guidance for growth, development and the aesthetics. It's a way to get consensus amongst us as the leadership, the staff and the community. Provides guidance for future decisions and better allocation of resources. So putting a plan in place helps an awful lot. So whoever sits in these chairs uh has the opportunity to share from what was the plan before and make decisions not for the short term, but really for the long term. The next item three is what should be included in it. You know, a vision statement, where are we trying to go, what's it look like? Things about annexation, which is always a discussion the city's had and in the past, some of the annexations have gone well and some of them haven't. And you know, being in Ward Five, I can tell you that when the Alpine Country Public Estates was annexed in, it has been a challenge for the residents out there since the time that was started. If there'd been a greater thought process about it, we might have a better approach to what's going on out there. Of course, we've talked about our infrastructure, water, waste water, gas, streets, thoroughfares, mobility, housing. Part of the discussion uh and housing is what are the needs, what are they expected to be? And an interesting discussion with Carlos Fernandez the other day, President Saul Ross about housing needs and I mentioned earlier the dorms gonna be full. Where is Saul Ross going? What are some of the housing requirements? When uh when Saul Ross is at its peak about twenty years ago in terms of the Alpine campus. In terms of total students, they had about a thousand students living out in the community. There are not that many properties today to be able to support students. So thinking about that whole facilities. Uh, master parks plan, we talked about that before, which should that look like? Economic development, capital improvements, implementation strategies. How far we look out, one, three, five uh years or beyond. What's gone on in the past and as Megan and I kind of tried to put together a list of things. There's a planning study done by Grant Works back in two thousand one. You see all the listed items are there. Two thousand sixteen, we had a vision plan put together. Uh, and that is still used today principally for the downtown area to provide some insights about what could be. There's a master parks plan put together five years ago, the street condition study about five years ago. And the tech stop mobility study plan is underway right now. There's a whole bunch of statutes that the state puts in place about what should it look like, what are the requirements, have you adopted, how do you follow it? Uh, I'm not gonna walk through all of them, but if you wanna get yourself put to sleep at night, pull these all up on the internet. Lots of good for your reason to kind of walk your way through. Item six says, hey, we represent the community and so part of our plan needs to consider how we engage the community. Well, three years ago, council went and looked and engaged the community about what's important in terms of the infrastructure requirements and employees. There's certainly opportunities to do that. We're gonna need to have a plan for that. What's it will look like going forward? Part of the action, I know Megan's gonna work and we as council will be engaged in is looking and saying, what's it look like? What's the schedule? What's it cost to go do this and how can we get other people's money to go be able to put something in place? Then establish a long term plan. And what do we want to avoid? We do not want a paperweight plan sitting on the desk that we don't follow. It needs to be something that we as council and the leadership of the city can use regularly under to make decisions. It's gotta be updated, which we as a city tend not to do very well updating plans. But you know, that's really the uh the comprehensive plan. So I think we have a sense about what a comprehensive plan ought to look like. Uh, Megan, I don't know if you want to add something else, but you know. Any initial thoughts?
Um, so this isn't something you that cities are doing. They've been doing it for a while. They're just utilizing them more and more, especially when it comes to resource allocation. Because there's a hundred and one million things that a city needs to get done. And if we limit it to a comprehensive plan, the bigger things get done a little bit quicker. There are a ton of agencies out there that are willing to help us. Um, I think what I'd like to do, if you guys are on board with it, I'd like to start forwarding you some of my favorite comprehensive plans. Keep in mind that they will not be comparable to the city of Alpine. Because these are comprehensive plans that have been updated and kept up to date for years. But it gives you kind of that understanding of where we could go. Our first uh comprehensive plan will be more basic, um, and it should be more. This is what you need to do, um, and this is the vision you need to take. Um, whereas others are looking at your much bigger initiatives, you're looking at larger capital improvement programs. Because they've done a a great job at planning. I'd like to start forwarding some of those. I've already networked with several, um, I don't wanna call them engineers, but firms. Um, that actually do these kinds of reports. Um, and there is a difference between a strategic plan and a comprehensive plan. It doesn't mean you can't have a comprehensive plan that you regularly update with strategic plans and you have those actionable items. Um, so if you guys are on board with continuing the discussion, I'd like to move forward um with some of those. These are what other cities look like. Um, I do have someone who could come in and do a short presentation, probably via Zoom to council to walk you through how the this kind of uh a project would be structured. This isn't, we started, it takes six months and we have this this beautiful thing. Um, community engagement is the the biggest thing. Um, we'd have to have more town hall, more discussion. I also wanna point out because we have all of those other uh more recent plans, I would not use our comprehensive plan from two thousand one. Um, because it was never moved forward with. I would definitely start fresh there. But our comprehensive plan could include our master park plan, it could include our mobility plan, which we just got certified today to move forward with. Um, it could include our um street condition study. So we already have bits and pieces of the plan done. This puts it all together with more actionable items.
Councilmember Stone?
As far as bringing the public into this, always up for it, but you know, we we haven't had too much of wins there. Uh, when we hold the town hall, there's two people here, you know, we're lucky if we have those two or five people. Um, and so I think, you know, this body right here has been elected by the people. It's it's the ones we've already had said what our priorities are, you know, their city employees, their uh water, wastewater, streets. We know what it is. We know what we gotta concentrate on. And you said, you know, we have, we've already got some plans that we can throw and kind of piecemeal this thing together. Um, I see that we know already our direction and places to go. Uh, I don't think this is a huge place to to go out and try to make meetings that just simply aren't going to uh to do anything more for uh what this plan and hopefully what the people have already told us what you need to do. But that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Uh, I think we need to pursue this and get more information and get uh somebody to to give us more so we can keep updating, allow your idea. So I think we're going to the right directions and you two are doing a a great job and just we have to keep going for the good of the community.
Councilmember Nance?
Gee, thanks, Megan.
I know.
One, I think what Mr. Stevens said is extremely important, having a vision statement there. I know from the school's perspective, um, the board there ties their core values to everything that the superintendent is doing there. So her decisions are led by the board to, you know, enact positive things in that entire district. So I think we do need to kind of get that in order and truly vibration. So everything comes back and you could get measured against that as well. Um, even what I, what I'm more passionate about than that is actually if uh council, the city has certain problems, I think, you know, that all communities are having problems with. Affordable housing is a huge one. Um, and I have followed a strong towns, long story short. Strong Towns really pushes for certain uh philosophy to uh community and everything else like that. And with that, they're doing things, just a couple of them from affordable housing standpoint. Is uh because Mr. Stevens just said that even from Saul Ross is great bringing people, they're gonna spend money here and then where do we put them? How do we lower the value to make it affordable for them? But I just kind of wanted to let the community know what they talked about is legalizing the next increment of development. So if you have a house, then you allow the development of that house into additional dwelling units or into a duplex, maybe a duplex to a triplex. Triplex to a larger um area. So it's increasing density within the city to get more people. And they, reading the book of Strong Towns, the most recent one, they say build, 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 build. By building, we're gonna increase supply and that's one way we're we're really gonna hopefully lower pricing at some point. I think that's gonna be extremely important. And just a practical way of doing that is uh from the cities, if we have infill areas within the city that are not developed. Um, creating templated uh building units or anything else like ADUs or anything else that the city and the building service uh group already pre-permits. So they say this, this is gonna be a unit, we don't have to come out there and check everything on it. It's a pre-templated design philosophy so that you can come in and just say, come down to city hall. Say I want a permit, they get you a permit and the developer can start working from that. Hooky cutter housing to a degree, but it is a quick way to get things done. And one question I had was on the annexations part. In the charter, are we still legally, what are we gonna, what is annexation gonna mean after the charter uh amendment that we put in?
So what we're removing from the charter is what we are not allowed to do. So we can no longer voluntarily annex someone. They have to petition to be annexed to the city. The important part of annexation is to understand that if the city does not continue to annex because nobody wants to be part of the city, then this is our footprint. This is where we are at and we are not going to have the housing to let be developed with what in what we have. Currently, annexation is really dependent on we don't provide the utilities. Um, and which we are not required to. So I mean, there are some exceptions, but as we look at someone coming in wanting to develop, the key part is is we want you to annex and we'll, we have that agreement for the utilities um or other services. So that's part of kind of the discussion. If the city, if you look at the two thousand one plan, there was a whole conversation in there about annexation. In two thousand one, we we legally could have annexed all of these pocketed properties around us. And it's, you know, and expanding. And then we would have had more developing areas. But the city never chose to. So I think it is kind of a key feature of our comprehensive plan to understand. If we don't annex or don't have the ability to annex, then how are we gonna utilize the space within within our in our boundaries? It's kind of like when you buy a house, you have fifteen hundred square feet, but you have, you know, furniture that fills two thousand square feet. How are you gonna? Or vice versa.
Saying that, I I would say the traditional design philosophy is go off and build because you build roads there, you put infrastructure there and then infrastructure is gonna be great for twenty years. So you're getting taxable, tax taxable income for twenty years that you don't have to pay for, but when the bill comes due, there's not enough density in there that actually support it. We got a great uh amount of infill here. Like properties that aren't developed within town, but they already have sewer ran by them. They already have roads ran by them. They already have everything. So it will be important to kind of develop those infill areas.
And our planning and zoning is already working towards looking at that and then looking at our footprint. And that's what this comes down to is is what is our footprint and what are we asking for? Um, I would love to to hand all of you guys a copy of Strong Town because I think it is important, especially for the rural, smaller community. Even though larger cities are are totally going that direction as well. When we look at our density and we look at, you know, our property sizes and we look at the values and compare to, you know, the bill coming due, the cost of the street improvements, the cost of the utilities. Re-zoning or redeveloping our zones for like R four, R three, R two, R one, where the footprint may be smaller. So you have six houses on a block instead of two. Um, the impact on utilities and and the the property taxes is so much different than the compared to the six. The six is is a bigger bang for your buck. The return of investment is much larger. I'm also looking at multi-use properties. Um, when we look at our commercial dis- district and looking at how do we make those, you know, housing and commercial and in working all that out, this would tie to it. The one thing though that I do wanna point out and I I'm glad that Rick left it highlighted. If the city, we have, it's not if, we did, adopts a comprehensive plan, it must be followed when making zoning decisions. And that is really important, especially as you guys are having all these conversations and all of these requests to read those coming toward you. When and if this ever comes intuition, then you guys have to understand this impacts the direction we go for.
So saying that, I think that's extremely important, what you guys just said. Comprehensive plan has to follow or the zoning has to follow the comprehensive plan. But that does allow us flexibility in creating super tight zoning ordinances or loosening zoning ordinances. I think that will be important to loosen those zoning ordinances to kind of allow developers more leniency with certain things.
So this is taking all of the work of all of your current staff and your your boards and commissions and putting it into something for the future.
Councilmember Escobedo?
I do agree that we need a comprehensive plan. Um, so as far as bringing somebody in to explain to us, is that are you wanting that person to help with the comprehensive plan? Or is it just to explain to us like what we need to work on?
So they do do comprehensive plans as a living, but I am gonna request because of procurement and we wanna make sure we do our due diligence and we're very competitive, that we do go out for requests for proposal. I've looked at other cities when they've done this and the scope of what we're asking is what's really important. Some ask for very minimal, they just want an update. Others want, you know, everything from scratch to to the prebound book. Um, so I think it's important to understand from a vendor or consultant what's capable, what they can and can't do. Um, and then go out for the RFP to understand what do you want your scope to look? What do you want included? Do you want just the key components? Do you want it to be an umbrella comprehensive plan that includes a one and three year strategic plan? Do you want him to only focus on certain things?
Sure.
Um, there's so many things we can do, uh Lucy, that I just wanna make sure that you have someone kind of walk you through that. This is everything that can be done within a comprehensive plan. Um, and then we can narrow down the scope or we can make it even.
And what's like a ballpark, what you you have an estimate on? How much of a cost?
I've seen anywhere from twenty four thousand to almost a hundred and fifty. It really truly depends on how much. But we already have some of these plans. So some of this research has already been done and we've paid for it. Now let's incorporate it and make it part of a strategic plan.
I mean, I do, we we do need one. Um. It's way overdue.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just three comments, uh, having an outside facilitator, I think is important. Uh, I'm not gonna go in because of the relationship with Saul Ross a little bit on the SDBC. Smallness Health Center and dollars because of the great synergy between the two organizations. So I'm happy.
All yours.
Got it.
Thank you for volunteering.
Second is, uh, I know Megan, I'm the one who asked, you kind of have the city manager report items on there that you've got, not trying to add to your list, but we probably wanna talk about it. At least monthly as a minimum quarterly about. Just so we counsel keeping on top of mind and you're able to ask us for help where you needed that down the path. Uh, the third item that I, and I know Reagan, you weren't part of the process before when we did the vision plan in two thousand sixteen and or facilitated all the discussions treaty plan. We had not a few people, we had a lot of people show up for these discussions. So I'm a, I'm one who believes pulling the community, engage them, gotta give them something to go work on. But they're well facilitated. I know there are some meetings that over a hundred people on them and they're willing to show up. So people will show up if we give them some meat that you want. And this is one I think that people are willing to chew on. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. And I just wanted to add, when we did our latest town halls, we had them in different locations and each council member's ward in different places, the school, the civic center, the visitor's center, different places like that. Different times of the day, different days of the week, like Saturdays. And we had a good number of people come and that's how we got that. First, we need to work on water and wastewater. Second was employees and third was streets. And so we got that from all the individuals who came. So it is very important to do what we can to advertise that we're having these, where they're located. And then of course, having snacks was always a good thing to have food, they will come.
Yes.
Yeah. And then to piggyback off of what Councilmember Nance said, I completely agree with him about everything that zoning and planning needs to look at, the types of housing. I know there was an ordinance that was written about the minimum square footage. And there is a developer that has property within the city that wants to put in small homes, not just tiny, tiny homes, but smaller homes, less than what we currently require as far as square footage. And he wanted to make it affordable for uh teachers and nurses and and anyway, so we have that ordinance that we might also want to look at involving the square footage, the minimum square footage. Okay. And Megan, you were wanting to say something, I could tell.
Well, I I just wanna to follow up. I know that the community engagement really is the hardest part of this. Um, because I I am right there with you, community clean, like two people showed up. Um, and it is disappointing. Um, I know that in looking at and researching this, um, and doing my brain development with this project is the big thing that came back is the diversity of the location and to make sure you know your stakeholder groups. So if that means we do a presentation and we have a conversation with just those who have So if that means we do a presentation and we have a conversation with just those who have lunch at the Sunshine House. Then we focus on just them. Um, and working with Soul Ross and maybe they can have all the teachers come in and we do something with just them. Um, community engagement out of all of the conversations with anyone who's done this. Even when people don't participate, that is still telling.
Yes, and and I think that's where we can really pivot towards the uh institutional knowledge and the specialties that we have right here in the community. Uh, you definitely poked my interest when you say talking to seniors, that's a conversation about healthcare and that probably needs to be in here as well. Um, and then just like teachers or others, that's definitely a specialty, you know, that can obviously be a lot of different things. One thing that I do have a a concern is. Uh, outside consultants, and I think I bring this up a lot is, you know. Hundred and fifty thousand bucks, that's that's two employees working on a comprehensive plan every year. Uh, and I I just see that, you know, we shoveling this money towards Austin or Houston or someone even out of state. Uh, we're just not gonna get the the right thing for people here and we're gonna be paying for hotel rooms of people that we could be getting. Great citizens to be able to lead this, um, whether it's in a staff role or or some some in volunteer roles. Like some of our ad hoc committees right now anyway. Um, and just to go off the same thing, uh mayor, I am looking forward uh to the next few months, looking more into those small units. On my plate, uh as well as councillor Nance mentioned, talking about. Uh, what? Different cities have called weird development rules, I guess, and what I think we could could uh message as, you know. Uh, uh codes that are as far out as Alpine is or something, you know, we can find a good message for it. Uh, you can count on me for that, but uh something that I've talked to uh multiple residents and. That have perhaps come from other communities here or that have been here as well as being able to support seniors. Or low income workers uh that already own their properties and being able to have extra units on that. Finding ways that maybe there is can be tax incentives, being able to create the housing for these university students or other folks. It not only, it's it's win wins for everybody, we get. Property owners that can have some basic incomes coming in and we can also be able to increase our affordable housing here in town. So I'm looking forward to bringing those to y'all in a discussion mechanism over the next couple of months as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, moving on to discussion, I don't see. I do wanna point out that Johnny from the water department is here as you're leading the discussion, councilmember Stone, if you would read see. And start us off.
Discuss changes to water billing ordinances, so we know where this came from, uh just to give a highlight to what we chatted about last time and. Uh, city secretary, feel free to stop me if we are having to stay completely on ordinances, I am hoping and I can do an inquiry to you if we're allowed to talk about. Uh, some of the the updates from the city manager as well, that's my hope to do that today as well. Um, but uh back in April, May, as we were getting ready to change this council, we. Run into where there are uh either a lot of folks that have. Weird water bills getting delivered to their houses, or there's just a a lot of leaks or our meters are failing or. Who knows, that's what we're trying to figure out. Um, and. Last meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, you know, the three points that I'd sat down with city staff to try to work out. Uh, one is coming up with some sort of a one pager of what happened, uh, you know, what uh. Uh, basically explaining the actual versus an estimate on your water bill to let other folks know. Uh, there's an A or an E next to your bill, and that means if it's an actual and it was looked at by our water. Uh, uh, department staffer, or if it's an estimate and typically to my best of my knowledge, it goes back twelve months. And we take an average of what your bills have been in the last twelve months. Um, and then further putting on there, if you do get a water bill that you think is not correct or you're not comfortable with is steps that you can take. Um, and so the first thing I'm gonna start out, Megan, is. Uh, where are we on that and any updates on um? What we're doing, cause this, I I'll be honest, is, you know, it's now even been a month since we talked and. I I think everyone up here thinks this is a big priority and so. I understand we wanna talk to everybody, but I think putting together those three things are are.
So Carmen is currently working on the FAQ for water billing. And providing the additional internal steps for customers. And then every person that has been directed to me by any of the council members or other residents. Has been directly contacted and followed up with, I mean, including the ones that you have forwarded to me to address. They have to step forward, I I, social media does not work for for us to address problems.
True.
Um, so when someone does call and they do, we walk through the same procedures and the same steps. Um, I know it is very hard for residents, especially when it comes down to the meter test does pass. When the meter test does pass, i- it is a hard conversation. We've done everything on our end, the bill is a legitimate bill. Now I know that the customers are concerned with the estimating, we are allowed to estimate, um, it is not done. Hardly often as it was before. Um, we estimated, uh, for some accounts um in April and for others, we estimated them in May. Part of the FAQ that Carmen's coming up with is really to how do you read your bill? And understanding your bill, I know several of you have also worked out with some of your constituents and had a conversation with them and investigated. And looked at some of the concerns. Um, we've only adjusted to accounts that I am aware of. Um, as a direct result of the conversation with council and then being brought to our attention. Now, we have adjusted several other accounts because as we got the new reads in and the reads obviously went backwards. Because either the estimate overestimated, we go back and adjust that account. And the the customer either has a lower bill the next month. Or they have a credit on the bill and they call and say, hey, what's going on, what happened?
Sure.
Um, the FAQ is taking a little bit longer because we do have um a new trainee. So our staff time is focused on making sure that they're up to date. Um, and also the last time we talked about this, um, we were working with the water department to. Get them involved with why it's important that the meter reads are accurate and what they're providing us, cause it doesn't, this isn't just billing. This isn't just a software, this starts from the guys in the field going to the meter and reading it. And understanding, you know, the issue that they're having, so we addressed that, we set up a new process internally and procedures so that they can do that. Um, and it's also. At the end of the month, so when we talked about this in July. At as we were going through July, we were still trying to get the meter reads in to even make any adjustments. So we don't know if an adjustment needs to be made until we know the next reading, so. Carmen worked with the utility department, um, as well as Lupita. Um, the whole team has met probably three times in the past, less than the past month. To come up with the procedures and to have a conversation of the importance of it. We get the meter reads in and then we start making adjustments, but then we automatically go into a billing. So her time has been limited to trying to get the actual build in and adjust all the. So she is working towards it, um, she's come up with her draft on the FAQ, which is the frequently asked questions, like, how do I do if I don't agree with my bill? Um, when it comes to the terminology used for the information item, there is no ordinance addressing. The procedures for utility billing. It just says your bill is due. On the first of the month, um, and then of course, it can be cut off. And then these are the expenses. I had started working on it with the utility department. Um, every director has their own interpretation of how the utility ordinance should look and what should be included. I have found several cities that have a whole section on customer. Uh. Kind of like customer requirements, customer requirements, responsibilities.
True.
And it outlines the responsibility of a customer and kind of the steps that they can take to address this. One of the things that I wanna include in the upcoming, which we're hoping to complete this this year. Not the one we're in, but the one we're coming up in. Um, is to include a whole section on customer responsibilities as well as the one off, I have a sixteen hundred dollar bill. Maybe I had a water leak, was out of town, didn't know about it, is there any way the city can help? And actually outline that there are restrictions, requirements, that if you have that one off bill that. As a city, we're allowed to go in and we can say, okay, you followed these steps, we're gonna adjust your account this one time. We only do it once within a twelve month period, but then there is a solution to some of these. What offs, um. I do know that estimating was the biggest impact in that that was hard for some because if they had a month where. Just this winter, we had several customers lines break because of the freeze. Um, and they had high water bills, and so that will throw off an estimate. Um, unfortunately, we don't have a mechanism in place until we get the meter read to go back and adjust the account. And so that's what we've been doing. Um, but I'd like the ordinance to include a whole section on customer responsibilities as well as if I have this situation. These are the steps that city employees can take. Um, cause right now, if I adjust an account without any type of, okay, well, your meter was broken or this is what happened. Um, I'm violating your ordinance, um, the ordinance is under set by.
Forgiveness thing that y'all kind of do is not really written down anywhere.
There is no ordinance that dictates the billing, so what we do is we walk through the internal steps as requesting the re-read. Um, if it comes back and sometimes it comes back and we call the customer like, hey, you're already at a hundred thousand gallons and it's only been seven days. Um, something is definitely wrong. Or maybe it comes back and the meter says, you know, we read it at six seventy five and it says six sixty five, you know, we need to adjust your account. We've got the pictures and the documentation, if it comes back and it's was read at six sixty five and it's six sixty seven. Um, the next step of course would be, hey, can you test my meter, maybe it's faulty, um. The other side of the meter test is when it fails, yes, we will adjust your account, but you'll also get a new meter. That will read every drop that runs through because it's a brand new meter. Doesn't have anywhere in terror, so that sometimes upsets customers as well because all of a sudden their bill is is a little bit higher, but it it's now reading the whole thing. Um, if the meter comes back and it is working and it doesn't fill our meter test. Um, then we do say, okay, if you wanna replace it, that your cost and we'll replace the meter even if it's not faulty. So we do have internal procedures, nothing is strictly outlined within the ordinance.
True.
So we're working like four different angles to try to get this fixed. Educating it by coming up with that um pamphlet that we're gonna send out to all of the public, it'll be shared on our website. Um, we can have it as another discussion, but it's all gonna address everything that's ever been questioned when it comes to, you know, my my bill.
Yeah.
Um, and then of course, looking at the ordinance to say, these are the steps you can take if you have that one off.
Yeah. Uh, I I love, I love that. You're seeing this, that that it needs to get fixed and wouldn't it be amazing if we did some really good work on this in the next month or two and can report back to the community that? You know, we we got this, we hear you, we got this, um, with the FAQ. Uh, I think it's gonna be an awesome document for internal staff, but I'm not sure that we're gonna get, you know, folks to read a three or five page. Paper or even longer than that.
It's not gonna be three to five pages, online it's gonna be where they just click on their question. Um, we want it into a simple pamphlet that we can send out.
Okay.
Um, and it can be shared on Facebook where you do a question at a time, we'll utilize um our police department because it's one of the higher use websites.
Sure.
Um, Carmen is also scheduled um to be on our city talk uh show in uh uh in October.
Okay.
Um, and the reason we did that was one, um, we do send out notification for our cutoffs as well.
Yeah.
Um, and not only do we send it out as a pamphlet, but it's on our website, we do monthly updates, it's on Facebook every month.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have her on our city talk web show to actually, not show. City Talk Radio Show. Um, to kind of go through, hey, this is a whole school of new information, um, we do send out information within our utility bills. We utilize some social media. And I understand, you know, people aren't gonna read it, people aren't gonna pass it over, but at the same time, we're trying to. Provide the information in every form we have available.
And that's what I wanna see is that we're trying. Um, I'm also really glad to hear, uh, I wanna give a shout out again to Carmen like we did last meeting, I know she's working a lot on this. And has plenty of other things to do as well, and so I'm glad to hear that, I think. From what I can tell, customer service was the second point that we were talking about, that I I think that we have some better internal procedures that. Uh, more uh interdepartmental communication is going on as well, so that's a good thing to hear, I'm glad to hear that too. And so that brings us to the the third thing is what we're discussing is any policy changes. There's a ton of ideas from, uh, I don't know, someone told me that Rick said once that. Everybody should be reading their own meters, which is not my favorite idea, but I don't know. Uh, two, that we we could possibly, um, you know, have a estimate almost all year long. Where we do a a reading in the winter, a reading in the summer, we take and we take a. An uh, an average of that and that's what your bill is throughout the year, we could lose some money on that, I think as well. Um, that's obviously been a comment there as well. Um, the last thing that I thought about as well is actually getting, and I know that there's a a software or something that you're using and you're not. Able to change this as much, but seems like we can go back and kind of do one by one. But when we see, uh, when we do these estimates, we could take out, you know, there's twelve readings from the last twelve months. Make a, I I don't see that, you know, some software million dollar, billion dollar company can take off the highest twelfth one. And just get the average and that might get us better, better uh estimates as well, you know, something like that, because a lot of times. We have a winner, I've had a leak at my house, but you know, every, I don't know, a lot of folks have had leaks in the winter. And you get all of a sudden, you know, some crazy five hundred dollar bill that. We might do a forgiveness, but then, you know, and so forth. And so I think there's a lot of ideas and I just wanted to open that up to hope that we can move forward with some policy changes in the next month or two to show folks. That again, we are working our butts off to get this solved. Um, opening that up to.
Councilmember Stevens?
Folks' ideas.
So, uh, all of those were water bills, I worked three of this week. I was working one, of course, to come to city council. They make a point, they go show people how to read their meters. This is not that hard, you just pull the cover off, you look at it, you pop up and says, oh, now I understand, most people have no idea. And when they understand where the, how the leak detector works, then they are much more sensitive to the situation. In this particular case, uh, thanks to Priscilla, uh, who was out there with uh with that resident. Uh, they walked through, found the issue. Uh, that particular resident was surprised, how much water they consumed and why they consumed it, so. I think we can help through the education, I'm looking forward to the FAQs. Uh, and I I think that will help people, but I think part of it is we just have to help educate them. My mom's water meter leaked three weeks ago, okay, it was on her side. You know, I called the water department, they came out and went, says, hey, Rick, it's on your side, great, we gotta fix the headed down this path, so. I think. There's always two sides to the stories. Uh, and uh, I think we need to help residents understand how to work it as well and. We need some training, we gotta go out and do that, the FAQs will be helpful, but. I think, uh, we gotta help our residents as well.
Councilmember Escovedo?
Hmm, I like your idea on the trainings and learning how to read them. So if we need to. Teach. Our citizens or, you know, calling somebody to go and do it, that that's great, definitely. Um, we're not the only city who has those issues, you know, I constantly see it on the news. Uh, we're also that. They're not reading it every month, other cities don't do it every month. And that kind of gives us some kind of relief there. I mean. There's not that many employees that are doing their meter readings and that could kind of. Help. So, I mean, it's not a bad idea, you know. To not read every month. Um. Hmm, I think that's why how, I mean, I agree with the, you know, doing the forgiveness, I mean, sometimes you just. Some people can't afford to pay a high amount, I mean, I've heard. I know two people that have had their bills at two thousand, one at four thousand, I think, and I'm just like. There's no way they would be able to pay. You know, whether it's their fault or whose ever fault it is.
Are we logging and I know I'm putting in quotes this forgiveness policy, are we logging when that happens?
There there is no.
There is no policy.
There is no forgiveness policy, so.
Let me just do it or don't do it?
No, we don't, we don't do it.
Okay.
There's payment plans, so we adjust the account when the meter is broken or when the meter read is officially wrong, like we've documented that it does not match.
Sure.
Um, we offer payment plans. We encourage them to do the budget billing. We encourage them to reach out to the community organizations that can help with. Um, we do a one time, like I, we call it kind of a hardship with, hey, I can't make the payment this day, please don't cut me off, I'll pay it this day. Um, when it comes to some of those high bills, I know that last month we pulled out all of the bills and even removed them from ACH. Called every one of those customers to let them know, hey, your bill is extremely high, we're investigating it. Um, please be patient and then we followed up with them, some of them we did adjust, some of them, they're like, no, I expected it to be that high because I I had a water leak. Out of town, um, so our system does kick back high reads, um. To an extent, it's not gonna kick back every high read because it it is limited. Um, but we don't forgive, um, now if we have a a person. Um but we don't forgive. Um now, if we have a a person who comes in and it says, hey, I put my payment in the box and we find it stuck up in the top and so then, okay, yeah, we remove the disconnect re uh reconnect fees. Um and when regards to some of the water bills, and this is what's gotten us getting in trouble, we have been moving. We have some of those individuals whose bills are high. We put them on a payment plan. They don't follow a payment plan. Put them on another payment plan. At the same time, they're not making the minimum. They're not making the past due. And they get stuck with a nineteen hundred, two thousand dollar bill instead of us saying, hey, we're cutting your water off. Pay it now. Um we let it build up, which did not benefit the resident because now they're stuck with a higher bill. But our leniency in trying to work with them is what got us in trouble. So we did close those accounts. We we started fresh and saying, hey, we've worked with you for a year. We've worked with you for nine months. We need, we need to, we need to work something else out.
So if a customer requests a a meter, who pays for that?
So if the cu- if our meter tests good and we don't see a fault with it. The 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 customer can replace it at their cost. So we would bill them the cost of the meter and the labor and we would go in and 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 change it out for them.
Would that be on the website?
It will be under the FAQs.
But it, but the fee for a new meter is on the website today. Yeah, if you looked on the fees for water, gas and all that, all those are.
It's not a new tech. It's literally just a meter replacement.
Cause I have, I have told some of the customers who said, look, if you're not happy with that meter, just get it replaced. And I I was, I told them, I don't know how much it's gonna cost or it is or it's a nice, just ask them.
What is the price? Off the top of my head, I can't remember. I wanna say seventy-five.
Seventy-five, eighty, it all depends. Right now, we're just buying it and purchasing for one vendor is to go on formation. They never goes through, we're trying to do that for the cake party.
Smart meters. So so the utility department has tried to stick to one brand so that if we move into a smart meter, um all of the meters are the same brand, it is easily to to get them all changed over.
That's not, that's not on that.
Thank you, Johnny.
I mean, in this.
Yeah, the size of the meter.
The size, yes.
I also do wanna point out that, yes, we we don't mind that customers read their meters, but we do have a tampering fee. So when a customer looks at their meter and they freak out and they try to touch it or they try to turn it off or they get upset, um we then charge them a hundred and fifty dollars. So we don't encourage them to read their own meters, only because if they decide that, oh, well, it's I've got a water leak, something's going on and they break it trying to turn it off, it's tampering with with the meter. And that is a fee set by ordinance by council.
That sounds like it's still part of the education. I mean, people can know how to read something and if they do something wrong, then you know, that's what that is. Couple of questions just. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then council member all of us.
Yeah, sure.
Couple of questions, Megan. Um I'll be quick. I think good idea on the one pager, Mr. Stone. Think that would be good that I'm assuming we just shove in the water bill and that way they can have they get their water bill and then it's right there in their face about FAQs on water. I like that idea. Johnny, what do we estimate? We don't have enough people or time.
Johnny, you're gonna. Yeah, go ahead and come on up to the podium.
I was gonna ask a question.
And state your word, please.
And your full first and last name.
Johnny, welcome to City Malphite.
Uh there's some times when we have water leaks. What was that? April, was it the last time that we had to, when was the last?
We had a water leak May seventeenth. We have a water leak May eighteenth.
May was the worst.
Twentieth. We had a water leak May twenty-first, maybe twenty-second. Just about every day.
Yeah, and then we have some sewer backups. I mean.
The geyser was crazy, yeah.
Yeah, I was in it. Should have been there. Yeah, but uh it it varies. I mean, there's stuff that comes up. As my bike, I had one guy that's out for two days. Health, you know, and you know, we gotta try to finish those routes. And you know, something has to pop up.
So you, we can't plan for the unknown and that's causing issue. If that totally makes sense, then on the estimation. And if you stay up, I have questions for Megan's on this as well. When you say that we can do the uh seventy-five dollars for replacement of a meter. And then Johnny, you said we've been, we're probably about two, three decades deep in moving into digital meters, automated meters. Is it possible for us to just find a um a vendor, choose that vendor? The way these systems work is it talks back to a water tower cellular. And then now the, it's on the owner of the water meter to actually, they're getting email alerts, they're getting all the alerts, they're seeing immediately when these issues happen. We would be subsidizing this if we could actually choose a vendor, throw it on the water tower and then people like me or whoever else could buy one of these meters. I wanna say these new meters, too, are like two fifty.
Uh they're more than that. And plus, you know, you, we need to get that uh, what is it, that computer program and all in order to get it from the the meter to our system to the computer, to the main computer and all that, that flags us. But you know, it's difficult. The last time I talked to a vendor, we'd go like section by section by section, so many meters. And within five, ten years of of something like that will pay out.
Cause that's where my mind's going is when we go to T M L, there're gonna be these automated vendors, automated meter vendors everywhere, trying to get his business. And then if you have a crazy bill like this, and I say, you know, if I had a four thousand dollar water bill, then I got a problem, you know, right then and there. If I get a thousand dollar one, then I'm willing to spend three hundred and fifty on a automatic water meter myself. I'll even sign a contract and say it goes along with the house. I'm not taking it with me. The only reason I say that is as that scales out and expands, then you're freeing up labor. Or, you know, where you can actually send them over to the areas that actually need stuff done. As we scale out automated meters, then we're gonna have a reduction in labor over time and cost savings in theory. Where my mind went this whole time we've been talking about these is it had to be some huge capital project. Like we have to come in and drop a million dollars and do a quarter of the city and all their meters, cause I guess that's traditionally how it's been done. If we don't have to do that and the owner is actually willing to purchase the automatic meter, we're just subsidizing subsidizing the service. Maybe not even with the server like what you're saying where it has to go to a computer. I'm sure they have cloud-based versions on this now where it, the meter just goes to the radio tower, the radio tower sends it to the internet, and now we're receiving email notifications. And we set, I'm, I would assume alerts and say, says, I have a a leak, now it's on the owner to report that. So they can't complain because when I'm seeing like, when Megan said, you've got a hundred thousand gallons in seven days and we alert them. I would rather the the onus be on them to alert us on leaks. As opposed to, cause like you said, you already don't have, you already lack enough labor to go in and and keep compliance on all this kind of stuff or actually find anything. Something's really important. If we could push this over to the owner and you could even do something, this would be a farfetched, but dark skies. You know, people that couldn't afford these meters, maybe over time we get a grant. Now they can apply for a grant to get one of these automatic automated meters or something. Because that, what you said was most important to me is replace at your own cost. And if they're tampering with it and they need a replacement, they're two twenty-five already at a seventy-five dollar water meter and a hundred and fifty dollar fee. I mean, they're already two thirds of the way to a new meter. It's just we gotta be the first one to come in, step up, choose a service and say, if you're buying an automatic meter, this is the service that you're gonna use. That was everything I had.
City manager. My mind is just thinking how this would work. I I really do think if, I think the city should push towards a smart meter because, yes, so this is my long-term thought process. We pushed to a smart meter to help with the billing issue because they would get alerted. In seventeen, we installed fifty smart meters. I was a a guinea pig and I did. You can tell when I took a shower and you could tell when I watered my yard. We saw that. And and all of a sudden, I get this random email and saying, oh, well, cause I left my water on. I forgot to turn off the sprinkler when I left for. Um I I do like the idea that then it becomes the the uh citizens like, hey, I do have a water leak. Um my big concern and pushback would be, one, the software and how do we tie it back into our software with if one resident does it, another one doesn't. Is a vendor gonna wanna say, okay, well, we have to have a minimum of five hundred houses before we'll even come out there. Um then the smart meter becomes property of the resident or does it become property of the city? Is the meter ours? Um I I look at it as if the city moved to smart meters, yes, it would open up our ability for our employees to have more time. But then we could take the the water department from a, oh, my God, we have a fire every day to the proactive preventative, we're constantly replacing. And then when we look at those big projects of, okay, the street's gonna come in and pull up five blocks. The water guys are like, okay, I have it scheduled. We have our inventory. We're gonna put the five blocks of piping down. And we're not gonna worry about it because we're not trying to read meters.
Yeah, I mean, Johnny, it feels like, I feel like you're trying to vacuum the floor and then the house catches fire and you're still trying to vacuum the floor while the house is. Which, so coming back to the T M L thing, I would just state, when we go to T M L this year, that we asked them and we just grilled these vendors and say, how do we scale this out? How is this gonna tie into billing and everything so that we're not two decades deep into trying to do a project that's gonna do you a big favor?
Cause they're gonna come in and once they come in, they're gonna be replacing the, not the service line, sometimes the curb stop. You know, let's say, oh, all of y'all want a new meter, automation, automatic. You know, at least two of y'all, four of y'all, curb stops gonna break, so we got to replace the whole thing. And some, I do, you know, just turn it off, change out the meter. I mean, it's gonna vary.
Yeah, you know, everything's more complex.
Right.
It's a long-term solution to our short-term problem.
Yeah, that's why I think we got two things going on here, too, right now.
But I think ultimately, I I mean, that most cities are going to smart meters because of sapping. Um I I wanna point out that when you say, how do we estimate or why do we estimate? Um I want you all to also understand that sometimes these meters are just not accessible. Um someone goes on vacation, they park their car over the meter, um.
When it rains today, yesterday, we have an alley that's full of water. You can't read. There's ten meters that you can't read.
Which, if it was a radio, you know, a smart unit, it would still be sent into the mothership.
Could be sometimes. I mean, unless it
And then, you know, it it the the meters are read monthly. There's no question. It alerts the individual. They're they're aware of it. Um and there are, we've seen the website that, like I said, we tried it out in seventeen. Um and it was wonderful. I I'm not gonna lie to you. I got alerted and knew right then and there I had a water leak.
Well, I would say, before we go to T M L, Johnny, you tell us every reason it's not gonna work so we can give that sheet to the vendor and and then say.
And plus, the ones that we got that time, they were all plastic. The housing was plastic. You can't put plastic on. You know.
See, we need to know that because I'm not a water person. But tell us every reason it won't work so we can hand it to the vendor and that can explain to us why it will.
All right, Councilmember Ellis.
I have just one question. Uh what is the percentage of people that they complain about the water bills monthly?
Out of twenty-nine hundred customers, we probably have less than.
So that 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 shows that mean that ninety percent of people are okay with the bills.
That's complaining to us. Social media cannot lie. I can answer. I
Yeah, I don't have it.
We don't need to know.
But like, what comes to us, um if like I've been compared, we catch a lot of those before and we contact them and say, hey, we did a special read. This is what's going on. Um when we do bills, we we hit the ones that we know may be questionable. Um we do a lot of preventative. Um we notify customers, you know, hey, cutoff is coming up. We call every single person who hasn't paid, is what's going on. Um the team does a lot of extra work to try to get them back on the right track.
Yeah, yeah. My question is at the percentage, you know, uh that is always when people complaining and these are complaining, but then most of the people happy. So we, is you consider a high-risk problem that it has to be uh right away fixed or is something like having?
I think it does need to be fixed. I think it does need to be addressed because we're gonna have growing pains as soon as we switch over our software. Um we're gonna have growing pains as we try to educate and say, hey, um if we update the ordinance that now includes a customer responsibility and, you know, that will create growing pain, you know, get that pushback. We saw the pushback in twenty twenty and when they tried to update the ordinance to make the property owner responsible for the bill. But I think starting now, it is great. I think you guys are getting hit with those those ones that did get caught up in that estimate and it's been hard. Um but I think it's, it is, needs to be addressed. I don't think we need to wait. I just think it's, the timing has not been the best for us because we're trying to make it a team improvement and not, well, Megan said to do this, Carmen said to do this. It's like, okay, no, we need to understand. When you walk out there and you open up a meter, so when it gets to Carmen's desk, to when the bill goes out. And so now the team as a whole understands that problem. Um we've even had it now where the water guys, we we tell the customer, this is the individual who read your meter. He'll be right here and he can help explain. Um because it it's not just one person who should be taking the blunt of it when it's a team effort from start to finish to 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 get the end product.
Well, I think that you have taken the right decisions and the right guidance. So sometimes we don't have the patience to wait for the solution. We wanted the solution right now. But going back to education, you know, that we have to explain why and, you know, and I like all that uh dance uh ideas.
But I I really would add capital improvement plan. This is, this is why the the infrastructure is part of a comprehensive. Those smart meters would relieve some of the stress on the department. We hire more and more employees to do one job and where we could hire a AI system to do part of it. We can actually have the the bill replacing and preventing and updating. And you would see a a significant change. No, it's not gonna happen overnight. But I think that it would be a huge improvement for our community, especially when we talk about our infrastructure and wanting to grow and wanting to bring in more businesses and gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I think the education should start with us. I don't know how to read my meter, Rick, so you have to teach me how to read my meter. Thank you, Megan.
Honest answer? Jay Hore resigned and Jessica Garza was hired.
Just uh directors, directors.
He was the biggest opponent and then he left.
So just to round this out so that maybe we can have some more uh actual discussions or even some some uh some brought to policy changes next time. What are we feeling on a a twelve-month fear uh forgiveness policy? If somebody gets a, uh it doesn't matter what it is, if it's way out of whack. Um what are we feeling on that? You get one, one every twelve months and it, you know, maybe it's brought down to your average uh otherwise, or you know, it it, how how do we feel on what that policy is in other cities, knowing other cities do do that?
I would just say I would worry about management. Like then you have to think about who you forgave, when you forgave them. Was it eleven months ago, thirteen months ago, things like that? That's what worries me.
For what? Did they just put in a new pool?
And everything has to be equitable.
You know, grass.
Grass, landscaping.
The ones that complain the most are the ones that have beautiful lawn.
Or you could say, too, if you had a pool and you filled the pool that one month and then that's your forgiveness month.
Sure.
I don't know. Things are complex. I don't know.
So even the idea of just around like a leak or something like that, too.
What are your thoughts, Councilmember Stevens?
Conceptually, it makes sense. Practically, I think it's a big challenge because equity uh can, you know, if it was once a year. People are really smart. They're gonna gain the analysis.
Yeah.
And so I, the uh, as I said, I just worked the case today. Person had a big bill. Thanks to the water department, went out and worked it, found out where the problem was. That individual says, I got it. It's my fault. Uh as opposed, and I got, I'm in the middle of the phone calls and all the discussions and everything else. And this individual was frankly, very good, very honest, very straightforward. We had a good dialogue. But the amount of time that it will consume for already a team that is struggling. That's why personally, when I get phone calls, I go work it personally. And when I worked and I, and it's both sides of the equation. I'll admit, I've got a little bit more technical understanding of what goes on to be able to go work them. But I, I uh, I'd rather see us getting a longer term solution and put something in place that must have worked.
So noting that, uh. And just, I'm gonna back up one second. I don't wanna take up too much more time. I know we have a long agenda. But Megan. When we're looking back in the last few months, it's been going on a lot. When we get those hundred or maybe, I don't know what, I I was using the number fifteen, twenty last time and that might have just been what. Came out of my head, ca- came out of nowhere. But when we actually get that hundred or fifteen or twenty or whatever it is every month that are hollering at us and. Some are angry and I've had the actually the same experiences, Rick, everyone I've called personally. And they're all like, you know, this is my problem. I'll deal with it. If it's not, I just you know what's going on. So that's why the F A Q is gonna work out. But how many are actually having broken meters? How many are having leaks at their houses? You know? What are we seeing here? Is there a trend that's happening when we're actually finalizing the actual bill that they're gonna pay?
So I am required to sign off on all of the adjustments made.
Sure.
Um, in order to have the checks and balances. Uh, most of them are, um. Due to a meter read, um, where we've gone back and rewritten and documented it. And adjusted it accordingly. Um, we have replaced. Three meters in the past, maybe three months specifically tied to failing an actual meter test. Um, for the most part, it really has come back that the customer. Once they walk walk through the process, they say, okay, this makes sense. I understand. Um, it's really hard. Sometimes people don't understand a leaking toilet. Um, it really is a huge, it's a huge moneymaker for us, but. I mean, you don't always hear it.
Yeah.
Um, so it's the going back to the education. So our customers get upset with our service clerks because they'll say. Well, you might have a leak. Have you checked your toilets? Have you checked your pipes outside? And there's the argument with, I don't have a leak. It's on your fault. I I read, I read that it was your fault. Um, but then it's understanding, take a package of Kool-Aid deployed in the toilet and you'll watch it move. It will win. But educating them, there's things that we can do on our side where we can provide them with those diet packets. Um, we can do certain things. So we've been looking at all of that. But at the end of the day, I would say it's probably about. Eighty percent customer, twenty percent.
Okay. Then that kind of lets us know where we're going. And I think we're kind of just doing these things really for our water department. And I agree with this carpet thing. House burning. The way I was gonna say it is right now, we're not doing these meter, uh, uh. We're not logging meters every month because, uh, you know, it's in response to emergencies. What if we didn't log them every month? In response to trying to free up time for our our water department. Uh, so is that two times a year? Is that quarterly? Is that?
Oh, let's just do it quarterly from what I see and. I mean, I, from what I was reading and seeing on the news, I mean. They weren't having problems with it.
I I would just say that, um, there's a divergence there when we talk about uh quarterly or twice a year. That's a simplicity of process, I think, which would also solve the problem, um, for you guys, because you wouldn't have to go read meters at twelve times a year. You do it twice a year. But then that would make it nonsensical to actually put automated meters in. Um, because the automated reader is gonna actually read it every five minutes or hour, I don't remember. They actually do on that kind of thing.
And don't get us wrong, you know, you put an auto meter in there, you were still gonna have leaks.
Yeah, absolutely.
So as. It's it's not gonna, it's not gonna pick up the city side and pick up the customer side. So you know.
As a customer who's used to you reading it every month and then you stop reading it and I'm not educated and I get a leak and I don't know about it. Till three months later and I get hit with a five thousand dollar bill. I'm fearful of.
The quarter. Yeah. So I mean. Ultimately, what you, your vast knowledge, uh, is quarter gonna help you so much that?
No.
No, it's not. Yeah. So we just need to to look at the long term then here.
Smart meters.
Be nice, but we, it's a job. We have to read them.
Yeah.
Every month.
Okay. Well, then, you know, I I I don't know exactly how much more we got here. If there's not a will here and and our expert is is saying that. You know, freeing up that much time isn't gonna be the the place to go. Um. It seems like we got, uh. Customer service and inter interdepartment communications happening. We got an F A Q coming. And, uh, you know, if we do need to do policy changes, we can bring those back up again, but.
Johnny, so a smart meter, you still have to drive past the houses.
There's some that you do that we can put a repeater on. If there's, you can put a repeater on Avenue A, on Avenue A, name on. Or have it directly over here. It all depends on your.
So that would save you time, right?
I mean, if there's some out there technology, you know. You hit that button within hours, a day. Two days, it all depends.
Then I'd say, Mayor, the task force is being closed. We're coming down to, we're having, we're having some actual items here that hopefully we can.
And there's gonna be some that, you know, you kick, you click on it. It's not speaking to each other. The tech goes out there, checks it out.
And in the short term, the city of Austin has an adjustment of excess water bill that thinks are repaired. Which requires them to provide the documentation and outline how they can get their bill adjusted or the expenses. That would is something I'd like to include in our report.
Okay.
Okay.
And you.
Who's working the ordinance?
Yeah.
I have been.
You have been, okay.
All right, anything else?
Do we need to follow up on that in a month or something?
Ten is set for the first quarter of next fiscal year.
Okay.
To get your budget and everything. Be great. Thank you, Johnny.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and with that, we're gonna take a short five-minute break. Still recording, correct?
Yes.
All right, so that brings us to discussion item D. Uh, Councilmember Nat, before you read and begin discussion, please know that Rob is online. To speak and to answer questions and then Jessica is here in person. Okay, so if you go ahead and read that, lead us out.
Okay, perfect. So. I added this to the council agenda, um, because I think months ago, Geo and I probably looked at a short-term rental. Management company, just offhand, um, you know, to kind of look at how it can possibly help with the short-term rental, um. Not even issues here, I don't think, but long story short. Um, we sat in on a meeting and I'll just read some of the things that the the third party does. And then I'll discuss pricing a little bit. So. It would, what the software basically does, there's other options, I'm sure. This is just one option out there, but. Um, right now, Geo, in order to get compliant with short-term rentals. Uh, maybe a couple times a year, we'll look through V R B O, Airbnb and cross-reference, um, permitted short-term rentals. Because he deals with all the permits for short-term rentals, with ones that are showing on those sites. So where that becomes a problem is during Christmas, spring break, if somebody does a short-term rental briefly or at, you know, times when they're busy. Um, if we're not looking at that time to see what short terminals are on Airbnb and V V R O, then we aren't sure if they're permitted. What this company does is they do data scrapes twice a week. And they would, twice a week, they come back in and look at who's advertising on, um, thirty different sites, I believe. The R B O, Airbnb and a host of others. And if they see someone that is not permitted, because they have a database of the ones that we have permitted, then they know they are non-compliant, they are non-permitted. But that is how they catch non-compliant short-term rentals. They're also offer things such as, um. Ways for the short-term rentals to go through the permitting process and also ways for them to pay. Notification renewal, so maybe a month before the permit is up, it would get an automatic email saying your permit's gonna be up. Like just to let them know. So it kind of automates some of this process from the city's perspective on managing short-term rentals. Whole reason I did that is, um, I wanted to talk to Geo and to Jessica and Rob. Well, to kind of see what their current process is for short terminals and if they're happy with it. So I'll just turn it over to Geo, uh, now.
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, short-term rentals definitely does take a lot of time out of multiple departments. Uh, I do think software would be beneficial. I don't get around to doing audits frequently as I would like to. Um, and you know. Quite some time ago, we we tried streamlining things because it's really not very, uh, efficient for the residents and the people who are. Getting these permits, uh, to have to go to City Hall, go to Building Services. So we basically migrated the paperwork over to Building Services, but it's caused, you know, a lot of in between here. I do this, they do that. Uh, and I think that it really could be streamlined some more. I think that we need some new, um, options to kind of check the paperwork. For example, uh, they'll receive it at Building Services. I'll get it. Oh, where's this, it's been worked, where's this document? You know, it's very. Um, I think software might streamline things because it would tell you this is missing, well, you know, won't let you submit unless everything there type thing. Um, additionally, I mean, I think that we could use some online payment options as far as hotel occupancy tax. I know the G O S. The, uh, word that you have in the packets, uh, did provide that and a host of other things. Um, but I just think that the whole process is very expensive. I don't think that we cover our costs. And, um, I think that it takes a lot of labor and I think it should be streamlined. I think Robert would help us.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions?
No, and I guess if Jessica or Rob could also speak to what their part of the process is.
Rob is online, so you would, uh, unmute him if you haven't already, City Secretary. And Jessica, if you wanna come to the podium in case you want to add anything. Just introduce who you are and what department you work with.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Isley. I work for the Building Services Department. I do permitting and the code enforcement side when it comes to short-term rentals. Um, I don't know.
Can you unmute Rob? Okay, thank you.
So I I mainly am the one that's taking care of the short-term rentals with Geo. Um, Rob was a part of some of the software. Demos that we've been doing. And so he has more information. I know the one that, um, Darren had submitted in your guys' packet was in there, but. Rob probably has some more notes than I do on the one, the ones that went to, but there's more than one out there. But as for me personally, um, I deal with the application process, obviously. A lot of things have been handed over recently, but Geo really took the undertaking. He's really, it's been his baby for a very long time. There is a lot of work that goes into the application process. And making sure everything's submitted properly. And then having a shared drive between us. So we're constantly going back and forth, like, did you get this information? Did you get this information? And so having somebody else being able to to do that. And then also I don't do any of the backlog work to find out who's not permitted. He typically would, um, have, I don't know if he's doing it, if he has, yeah, or somebody helping him do it, but. Um, to find out who's not permitted. And so that's our job in our department. So he'll shoot us over. A message saying like, these people aren't permitted. And so after the, start the process of code enforcement. So we would write letters. Um, if they didn't comply within the letter, then we'd send them certified letter, then the same code process we do for all the other things in code enforcement. So we do do a lot of work on our side when it comes to short-term rentals. Um, and then also, um, the fire inspections that we do as well. Um, those, that's not really gonna change. We're still gonna have to do onsite inspections. However, a lot of the software that is out there, I know, um, I wasn't a part of the demonstration that Darren saw, but I was a part of the one that we saw. Um, recently with, um, the building official. And, um, that software is really nice to have because it'll tell us if they're permitted, if they're not permitted, if if they need code enforcement, if they need the things that. You know, they do all of that work for us. So we're really just checking to see where they do the hot tax part. They do, they tell us how many times they've been, um. You know, uh, rented out that month. So there's a lot of. of information on it, so based off of what all these STRs have been generating over the last couple of years, they can estimate what our hot taxes are going to be every year. And then they also have a call center that's available twenty four seven, so if somebody next to an STR is having an issue, they can call that call center and they will have the problem handled immediately, and they'll continue to call in to whoever made the complaint to check up on them, did the PD get there, or did the property manager get there, whatever the situation is. And then yeah, and then they also have a public facing portal that we can put on our website, you know, since we have so much, so many events here in the city, such as Viva Big Ben and Art Walk and stuff like that, to where if people are looking for STRs, because not all of them are on Verbo and Airbnb and stuff like that, some of them have gotten big enough to where they have their own websites now, and this company will monitor those, but however, it'll compile all of them, whether they're on, you know, one of the mainstream websites or their own website on one single link that we can put on our website if we wanted to for tourists coming into this area looking for a short term rental. And with everything that they offer, it's only twenty one thousand.
So I guess the reason Brian asked the question, it'd really be helpful just to see one page, here's the business deal. Here's what we're going to see, increased revenue on hot funding, here's what the expense is going to be, and that's going to be. That would really be helpful, then it's, in my mind, it's a simple business decision.
Right. On, on that, I got AirDNA pulled up right now, so I know that's another vendor in this realm, and then another one that we could also look in, I'd like to get, you know, a few quotes here, is one that I was looking at working with in Fort Davis is Granicus. If we mind looking into them too. I, a couple of questions, and this is just getting to the bottom of like, Brewster County last year went through a big ordeal where they paid twenty something thousand dollars, and then the company either went under or didn't do the job that they were going to do. And I'm noticing this company is three and a half years old, and Granicus, to my knowledge, just looking up, is twenty five years old, and so I'm scared that we're going to send a check, yeah, you were going to answer that for me.
Well, I was just going to say, I am not tied to GOOS at all. Like, and Granicus is the other one that I had read about, Granicus and GOOS, and then the one that Rob, I haven't seen. So I'm not tied to this all, I'm open for any of them. And then I was going to just talk about Brewster County, and Mr. Ivy's here, he's on the.
Oh, yeah, you're going through your.
Yeah, all right. It just, my question maybe I didn't understand just to clarify, when are we going to get the money to pay this store for year? We're going to up on the fees because you said changing that fee is going to cover the door body, so that we need to change the fees.
That was definitely a suggestion. I don't know what the long-term goal is as far as the money goes with short term rentals. I know that right now we have a one hundred dollar application to do for yearly, annual, and so it had been brought up that maybe just keep it at three fifty consistently, your application and then yearly.
These will benefit us, it is going to benefit anything that owners, if we sell them with all this new technology, or it just will help us?
I would say it would benefit especially if we had an online payment system, if we're able to provide some, you know, data insights, a lot of the companies, depending on which one you do, like that, and I for one, have talked to many operators that are like, what are y'all doing, why don't we have online payments? What year type thing? And as much as I, you know, I'm tied with them right now, we don't have that capability, if we went with one of these vendors, it's likely.
Don't we stay at a hundred dollars to renew it, or we will go up to cover the cost?
That's completely up to the council, but I mean, I would think that it would be a good move to at least be three fifty yearly to cover that cost every year. At minimum, and that would keep it the initial and the annual the same. Martha's five hundred with a hundred per unit. So I mean, they're much more expensive, they have more than we do as far as short term rentals, but I don't think three fifty is a lot for.
No, it's not, I would just think at the hundred, maybe in the hundred, we can go leave it up.
The hundred would barely cover the inspection. So that's where you have to schedule it and then put in the inspection, I mean, the amount of time that that our department puts into just the processing of the application barely covers that hundred dollars, it really only does that.
Councilmember Escovedo, you got it spoken again?
I, I really don't know. I can understand why I would want a third party, but I personally think that we should do it in-house. And my reason for that is every time we're wanting a third party to do this and do that, if we total all of those third parties, how much money are we spending and sending out? Instead of putting that many towards our employees? You know, do we need to hire another employee, and that person is employed and is getting money in? And that's also important, you know?
I do agree with having employees. I don't know if that was a question to me.
Okay. I think it was just a, just think about it, yeah. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, for me, it's very simple. The reason we'd like to do this is because we want to make sure all the short term rental crowdfunding we're aware of that's coming in, and we believe today there's probably forty or fifty units out there not paying hot funding. So to me, it's a simple business decision. Whatever we're going to increase in terms of revenue, it's clearly got to justify the cost of going and doing these bits. Otherwise, why go do it? So to me, that's why I say it's a simple business deal. Here's how much more money we think we'd bring in, here's how much it's going to cost with the vendor, here's our internal cost, bottom line. If we're making more money by doing this, I'd say go do it, if we're not, then I'll go do it.
Councilmember Nance?
Okay, a couple things, just I think it's super important to have this information. Like Gio said, and Martha, it's five hundred dollars for the first unit, a hundred dollars for each subsequent unit. So the Lincoln over there, that is a short term rental, they have nine units. I think now they're ten, but nine units, so that's five hundred, no, it's ten units, so five hundred plus nine more, you're looking at fourteen hundred dollars for that one short terminal permit for that one property. I would recommend, whenever I was kind of asking about the permitting process, you have to have a, a stable revenue structure if you're going to do anything like this, so that, that fee can't change year over year. So whether it's three hundred and fifty, it needs to be three fifty this year and three fifty next year. What I would actually recommend would be three fifty plus one hundred for each unit, so that we do scale it out for the ones that may provide a little bit more traffic or anything else in those neighborhoods, or a little bit more work to you guys to do notes. So that was on the permitting. Mr. Stevens already said it's about, in order, at three hundred and fifty dollars per permit, seventy five units would break even on something like this. I'm not tied to this software at all, any short term rental, I would actually recommend when we go to TML that we look at a bunch of different vendors. So next action would be, look at those vendors, bring them here, so that you guys can kind of see what y'all think is best. And then on the hundred percent for the boots on the ground, and Jessica was talking about, this isn't going to solve all the work, there's still going to have to be in-house work, which is why I say three fifty plus one hundred. The three fifty would cover the cost of the software, the hundred's going to cover the cost of the time that you guys are going to still have boots on the ground for. Where that's important is Mr. Ivy is on the Big Bend HOT Committee. They did a contact similar to this, I believe, and the gentleman that would have to travel down there, anytime there's a non-compliance issue, or they said, can you go check this property? It's not convenient to go check properties from here in Trillingway, or anywhere in Trillingway, that's a large geographic area. For us, it's not near as big of a deal, there's a non-compliant property, you drive from the east side to the west side, the west side to the east side. So I, I think this makes more sense from a city's perspective as compared to a large geographic area, so I can understand why Brewster County canceled that contract. And then one more thing, a couple more. Like Mr. Stevens said, we have about seventy five permitted STRs. They, from their DNA, it's article, I think they believe we have hundred and twenty five. We talked to Martha recently at a TML event, they have about one fifty, they think that they actually have two hundred total, so there's some non-compliant ones there as well. They also use Airbnb and everything, but I don't think you have a third-party management. So no one really has a proof of concept, it just is going to drastically increase compliance. But I do think it's important, even if it breaks even, it's pulling work off these two people that they can go off and do something else. Because it is freeing up labor is just as important as the other, the cost of the actual product. So the boots on the ground, for the employees, like what Lucy said there, I think we have, we already have issues feeling jobs, or at least private companies in our area. It's hard to find good employees to kind of fill these positions, so that's one thing to think about when we actually look at that. And the compliance, even if this does increase compliance, none of that matters unless we, as a council and a municipal judge, hold these properties accountable for it. But if we charge them five hundred dollars for a non-compliant property, that has to get up to the level of the municipal judge and hold them compliant, so that we actually are, just like a speeding ticket, or drinking and driving or anything else, we have, the system has to have integrity. And that was pretty much it. My, what I'm thinking from this viewpoint, two last things. Require, we, you had mentioned a phone service on level, where you can dial a number and actually get ahold of somebody if you have an issue. I believe that's in our ordinance, that we have something where it requires them to have a number or a contact to reach within an hour, or something like that.
They do have to have a local contact available, yes, but this software company that Rob was speaking of, they offer that service as well.
It's more for the people in the surrounding area that are having an issue with like guests at a, like neighboring STR.
Should be great, especially at night, when you probably don't want to get a call, Rob.
Right, yeah.
And then the last thing would be.
Call centers are located, like for Texas, that call center is located here in Texas, so it's not like going to India or something.
So the next actions in my viewpoint would just be, if the council has consensus that this is something we need to look at, not necessarily approved, Megan and Gio, when they go to TML, could go down there, look, reach out to a lot of vendors, see how that's going to work within the aspect of the our area, come back and maybe present that to council, and then you guys make a decision on what works best. And then maybe an implementation, December or January, something.
And we would have to call our. It's not just, this is the one.
Everything. It sounds like, and Megan?
Yes.
It sounds like we already got one, and we can obviously look at a couple other at TML, I'd love to look at Granicus too, just because I think, and to me, it seemed like all of these different prices are pretty similar, it's twenty one, twenty five thousand, wherever that is. That was like everything you could possibly get, where they basically run the system for you. And I'll be honest, I think we might have the votes here for something like that, because I, this is something that's already profitable for the city. So this isn't like a comprehensive long-term plan or something that I think really needs to be stuck in to, you know, employees that are here, that can actually be invested in the community and we're supporting. I, I see if we're going to spend, whether it's thirty five hundred or twelve thousand was a package that I was looking at with Martha at one point. We could also look at sharing this, maybe, because we only have a hundred and fifty or maybe two hundred. They might have, a lot of these plans, they go up to like a thousand units that you can put, block into one, you know, plan, and so we could share that with another town, that cost. And the last thing I'd say is exactly, you know, look at, all of these plans are going to be pretty similar, they're all going to be thirty five hundred for the info, twelve thousand to get a little bit of trinkets, and then twenty one, twenty five thousand for, everything's ran by it. So that we really look at what the companies, what differentiates them, and if that comes down to how many years you've been in service, or, you know, giving us actual data from other towns that look like us, that, that we can get the, the price models that, that Councilmember Stevens is looking for, that, that'd be really helpful to make this final decision.
Anything else? All right, moving on to item E, Councilmember Stevens, you read that, begin our discussion.
Yeah, so to me, this is a fairly simple discussion, the reason I put this on the agenda is since tomorrow, we have to turn in our agenda items for the next meeting two weeks from now. There is no mechanism for any of us to know what's going on the agenda, so we'll kind of throw the darts at the wall and put our stuff in, and then it kind of levels up. I believe we need a mechanism where we council can see what are we looking at in the future, so he says, oh, I can target it for this meeting, I can target this meeting, and target for this meeting, and we don't currently have a system, so that's, that's the request, we need some help. Just as a council member trying to make sure I get my items lined up. As I said, tonight I'm going to go home and sit down and start writing my stuff up for the next meeting. What can we do to?
Don't we have that new software, aren't we supposed to have access to that? So Gio and I have actually been talking about that. The software, it's definitely agenda management, but I don't see it as the overview of what's going on down the road. Only because we would have to go in and set up every agenda, which isn't a problem, but it's not visually easy. So when you're going in, I want you to know which agenda, where do I want to place it? So we did talk about it, not that, you know, access can be given, and we just don't think it'll be to the scope that you guys, or we initially thought. So we do have an internal spreadsheet that we utilize, and that's how we actually build the agenda to move it into the software. So we ourselves can plan in advance, especially for the annual required things. So one of the things we were talking about is providing a view only of that, where you'd still have to come back in and tell us based on the ordinance, what needs to go on the agenda. And the reason why it's view only, because we do alter those if an ordinance doesn't pass, if it got tabled, and how we move things. The only thing I know that was brought up, and I did a little research after Gio made the comment, was making sure that there's no violation of Toma. And so you would have the understanding of all the future items wanting to be discussed, and it would really be at your discretion not to violate Toma in discussing them outside of the actual agenda. And so that's kind of the only, I don't want to say fear, but kind of setback with having access to all the information, which we can clearly do, but making sure you understand that this isn't, oh, well, I'm going to go talk to Reagan, and I'm going to talk to Eva, because I see something on the agenda for September. That would be a violation of Toma, you'd be creating a walking. So that's the part we kind of wanted to discuss, and we do have Alessandra.
Anything else? All right, moving on to item E, Councilmember Stevens, you read that, begin our discussion.
Yeah, so to me, this is a fairly simple discussion. The reason I put this on the agenda is since tomorrow. We have to turn in our agenda items for the next meeting two weeks from now. There is no mechanism for any of us to know what's going on the agenda, so we'll kind of throw the darts at the wall. And put our stuff in, and then it kind of levels up. I believe we need a mechanism where we council can see what are we looking at in the future, so he says, oh, I can target it for this meeting. I target this meeting, I target this meeting, and we don't currently have a system, so that's, that's the request, we need some help. Uh, just as a council member trying to make sure I get my items lined up. As I said, tonight I'm gonna go home and sit down and start writing my stuff up for the next meeting. What can we do to work?
Don't we have that new software? Aren't we supposed to have access to that? So Gio and I have actually been talking about that, um, the software. It's definitely agenda management, but I don't see it as the overview for what's going on down the road. Um, only because, uh, we would have to go in and set up every agenda, um, which isn't a, a problem. Um, but it's not visually easy. Uh, so when you're going in, I want you to know which agenda, where do I want to place it? So we did talk about it, not that, you know, access can be given, and we just don't think it'll be to the scope that you guys, or we initially thought. So we do have an internal spreadsheet that we utilize, um, and that's how we actually build the agenda to move it into the software. So we ourselves can plan in advance, especially for the annual required things. So one of the things we were talking about is providing a, a view only, um, of that, where you still have to come back in and tell us. Um, based on the ordinance, what needs to go on the agenda. And the reason why it's view only, because we do alter those if an ordinance doesn't pass, do we, if it got tabled and how we move things. Um, the only thing I know that was brought up, um, and, and I, I did a little research after Gio made the comment, was making sure that there's no violation of Toma. And so you would have the understanding of all the future items wanting to be discussed. And it would really be at your discretion not to violate Toma in discussing them outside of the actual agenda. And so that's kind of the only. Uh, I don't wanna say fear, but kind of setback, um, with having access to all the information, which we can clearly do. But making sure you understand that this isn't, oh, well, I'm gonna go talk to Reagan, I'm gonna talk to Eva, because I see something on the agenda for September. Um, that would be a violation of Toma, you'd be creating a walking. So that's the part we kind of wanted to discuss, and we do have Alessandra on the phone, or Zoom. Um, Alessandra, I couldn't find anything specifically regarding the agenda and future placements. Um, just the precaution not to use it for, for discussion. Do you have any insight, Alessandra?
Uh, Megan, I pretty much agree with you on that. What you're saying, I believe, is, is, you know, valid to go forward with.
So we would. Yeah, so we would give them the view access and just kind of with a disclaimer, don't create a walk.
Yes.
Which.
That sounds good.
In my view, we have that potential now, because we start seeing things, we could, we could all go talk about it, so we all know what the rules for Toma are, it's real simple. Just so we can be like.
To, to clarify on that, before it's on the agenda, if we discuss it outside of an arena, if I'm talking to somebody, is that, that's not a violation, correct? So it's been brought that this is an item on the agenda?
No, so any discussion with city business, or you're talking with other city officials, can start to become Toma. So if you go talk to Eva, and Eva goes talk to the mayor, and the mayor goes talk to Lucy, you just created a walking form. Whether it's on the agenda or not, it's any city business.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so in theory, we can agenda out, the first time we talk about it is here. We shouldn't be talking to anyone else about it to say, hey, let's go talk about this for your subject, let's put it on the agenda. No, that is a violation of Toma. It's really simple. So I'm just trying to understand what's coming up, so we can think about where to target it, because we already know this meeting is gonna go well past nine o'clock tonight. Okay, and trying to think about, when is it important to be able to put things in, in my view, would really be helpful for us, so. In my mind, give us a read only, that'll be really helpful.
And then the, the reason the view only came up, just so you guys understand, is that we really do utilize it to build our agendas. And so if things are being altered midstream, and we've already built the agenda, we don't want to miss something, because it's happened to us, where. You know, we haven't put it on there, um, or we've removed it and forgot to put it to the next meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, good. Moving on to discussion item F, uh, once again, Rob and Jessica are here to speak. And this belongs to Councilmember Stevens.
Good, so, uh, thanks very much. Uh, the reason I put this on the agenda was to talk amongst all of us regarding home businesses. You know, if you read through all the ordinances, and Megan did the homework on this, twenty sixteen, uh, in October. We amended Appendix C zoning sections twenty and twenty-one to allow the use of conditional use permits for homeowners. To receive approval to operate home businesses. Uh, and there are a bazillion home businesses at Alpine, they exist, okay? And so by us thinking, uh, people aren't doing home businesses, because there are ordinance against them. I think we're a bit naive, because people are doing all sorts of things. Uh, in, in my view, uh, and the home businesses, people live in them, they occupy. And, you know, talking to Rob, the discussion, you know, if you look at the example, there is a particular trade, I'm not gonna list the specific trade. Cause I don't wanna irritate these tradespeople, because they're really important. But there's only one legal of particular of this trade in the city of Alpine, the rest are operating illegally. Cause they operate in our R one, they operate at the home, but we all rely on them. So, uh, i- in, in my view, helping people understand if you're running a home business that excludes retail sales. Or sale or food services in any form, is what's currently in the exempt for Schedule A. And so if people have a home business that they wanna operate, and they bring it forward, they could use the special use permit. That's my interpretation of how that is, I just wanna make sure we're all aligned. We don't have to settle it right now, but I know there's at least two home businesses on the south side, who wanna get set up. Uh, one's in the taxidermy business, the other's a forest, they wanna operate out of their home, they wanna do deliveries. Uh, and, uh, they're saying, hey, I'd like to be able to follow and come forward with the special use permit. To do that, there's a whole process they have to go through, they have to file the permit. Uh, they have to get approval from the neighbors and all that. Uh, and in my view, that's the right thing for us, as a community go off and doing back to Darren's comment a little bit earlier. We want to promote and support use of, uh, businesses, so long as they comply with the rules, and the rules are. Retail sales, and note that retail sales or food service in any form. That's the comment I'd like to make, and just get feedback to say, hey, Rick, that's the wrong thing to go do, or no, that makes sense.
All right, Jessica, do you wanna come to the podium? And Rob, if you would unmute, so you can weigh in and then stay around, so council can ask questions.
I don't know, do you wanna start, Rob? You want me to?
There he is.
Uh, we can go about it either way. Um, I got, I guess, quite a bit to go into this. Um, so it's just a matter of where y'all wanna start with it, and what questions y'all have.
Jessica?
I guess I can start with a little bit of information. Um, I do, I did print out the section twenty conditional use permits. And, um, it is allowable in residential areas. Um, if you read the residential R one through R four, it tells you that there are certain things that are allowable. And so, you know, anything with an R is residential, so that's where a family would reside, correct? And so, um, inside the R four, um, special use, conditional use permits are allowed for bread and breakfast. Um, Airbnb, a daycare service, educational facility, home occupations, libraries, museums, city buildings, religious, um, entities and parks. And so when you read about what a home occupation is by definition in our ordinance. It talks about that you have, that no person other than the members of the family residing on premise shall be engaging in this operation. So it, they have to live there. And there is exceptions for having employees, and, and it's in our ordinance, and it clearly states that you can't have up to maximum of three employees. And that has to be issued with their special use conditional permit, so, um, and when we think about what a home occupation is. We don't want, we don't wanna find a loophole to use a special use conditional use permit. To take the integrity away from a residential community. And so I think that's what our department's more concerned about, is that we're gonna open up a special use conditional use permit, which. These are clearly identified as daycares and educational facilities, these are things that are gonna really encourage a residential area. Um, we don't want to open it up to having all the options for commercial businesses. What is the point of having different zones if you're gonna allow all these commercial businesses to be incorporated inside residential, then. You're not gonna have the integrity of a neighborhood anymore. And so I think that's our main concern, um, when it comes to that. Um, the definitions in section eighteen about home occupation from our ordinance, um, tells us that there, um. There's a percentage of the building that can be used, which is twenty-five percent, if it's an accessory building, so it can't be the whole accessory building. Um, and that it cannot create noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electric, electrical interferences. Detectable to the normal senses of law, so it can't cause major issues with the surrounding neighborhood, that's. That means odors from a taxidermy. That's, you know, the, that's something that really wasn't a complaint on our, our end, that came through code enforcement as a complaint, so. That is something that I definitely think you guys should think about when it comes to allowing, because technically it doesn't fall under a home occupation, they're gonna use that building. If you read what home occupation entails. And I don't know, if you wanna add anything else, Rob?
Um, I mean, you hit pretty much everything when it pertains to the home occupation as far as it's defined in our city ordinance.
Okay, so, so, just back and forth on this. I mean, so here's an individual who has a business at home, they have no employees, special use permit.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that, to me, that's the point, and I think we ought to be looking to say. How do we help ensure compliance as opposed to right now, we're ignored of all?
I definitely agree with you, and that's actually something that happened with the taxidermy, uh, we're gonna use that as an example. Um, we're gonna use that as an example, because then we were like, well, because it was really a grease trap issue, because we were like, do they even have proper sewer? So then we went and found the other taxidermy place and opened a big can of worms, and now we're in the middle of code enforcement with other ones, because, and then you start reading, you're like, wow, all of these don't fall in alignment. With a lot of the issues, so now code enforcement is incredibly bogged down with having to deal with the fact that there's a lot of businesses. In Alpine that are operating illegally, and it has to be corrected, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we should continue to allow, allow it. It's like a non-conforming lot, and having a house that's not built up to code, we're not gonna continue for its existence, we're not gonna encourage it. And so, yes, it exists now, but we're not gonna encourage it to continue to exist that way. And that's how the code enforcement and how building services operates when it comes to non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures. Um, yes, there is some, and obviously they're, they're operating, um, their businesses illegally, and so we have to write them letters now, because we are aware. We never even had home occupation as an issue before. It was like RVs, RVs is a whole big thing right now. And realizing where they were, they're allowable, where they're not allowable, and if they can be slept in or they can't be slept in, and. A lot of people use them as extra housing, and you can't inside city limits based off the ordinance.
So, so, well, let's get down to it. Do we, or do we not support people running businesses out of their homes if they're the employee? They own it.
I guess it depends on what kind of delivery.
Oh, I understand. And so it's, we said no retail. Okay? And so, what business would we say, no, they can't? Most, we don't even know that they exist.
So does, uh.
What, what Jessica did was did the rules of, what was it, odors and what else did you say?
And they have to reside on premise, so it has to be your primary place of living. So it can't be somewhere, you live somewhere else and you're operating a business out of, out of another house, you have to live there, it can only take up a certain percentage of your house.
Yeah. Okay, Rob, do you have more to add?
I can, um.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry, I got like a, a binder full of like ordinances and codes and stuff in front of me, and I'm trying to read through it and try and like. Stick with what's applicable here, um, you know, like. The, the main thing is that when you look in, whether it be state law, what our current ordinance says. Or what the International Zoning Code says, when you have a home occupation. One, the property owner has to be the one running that, uh, home occupation. Um, can't have any employees that don't reside in there, however, in our ordinance that we have here, that can be. Uh, acceptable through a special use condit, or a special condition, or, yeah, condition, a special conditions permit. I'm sorry. And so, um, that one you can get around, I suppose. However, you know, the main thing is like, you shouldn't, like Rick is saying. There's a bunch of businesses that are running out of their homes that we don't even know about, and that's the whole idea of a home occupation, you don't wanna know it's there. They, they shouldn't be noticeable, they're not legally allowed to cause any congestion, they're not. Like, it can get real restrictive, you know, when you look into the International Zoning Code, as far as like parking, because we have parking as an issue. Um, right now with how many we should, um, require. And so like, International Zoning Code says that you have to have two per dwelling. But if you're gonna have a home occupation where you're gonna have, uh, a customer come. It has to be by an appointment only, you can have one, only have one customer at a time, and you have to have an additional parking spot. So then you would have to have three for that home occupation, because it's not to con, or cause congestion into. That residential area, and that also goes into our state law in, uh, section two eleven. Um, when it comes to allowing conditional use permits for residential areas. Um, so a, a lot can really go into it, and it's really kind of gonna depend on what y'all are really wanting, what direction y'all are wanting to go with it. You know, in, in how much we want to lean on the code, when, uh, Rick and I had stated, you know, he admitted known that. You know, we're not an international community, we're a home role community. Um, and so we get to kind of set our own parameters, um. To, to an extent, you know, there's still state laws and, and state regulations on zoning that we have to abide by. And, and I would like to just have that in the front portion of your brain when we discuss this on the, on the direction that we wanna go. Um, with it, and how in-depth, and how much we wanna pull out of International Zoning Code. Or leaning from other, um, city ordinances from surrounding areas.
Okay, Councilmember Stock?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first thing that's glaring to me, uh, and I just see like, if we start enforcing this. A little bit more, even though it's gonna be hard to know where they are, you know, here and there, but that, that's that. We can work around, is this gonna help fill up our downtown? You know, are we gonna pull businesses out of houses, and the ones that are profitable, that are actually working, you know, I, I, to me, a taxidermy business is a pretty darn profitable business that I would think of, and. They're gonna take a space on Main Street soon, and, uh, and so forth. Um, the other thing that I, I had to say here, as well as, uh. Opening up further, maybe a can of worms here, but to be honest, like food delivery, or I'm getting this law wrong, but it's like the home. When you make food products at home and you can sell them from your, your house, or whatever that might be. Uh, that seems like a business that's needed here as well. Uh, and, you know, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but folks that. Grow plants at their house and bring them to the farmer's market, or like the little salad things that, the mini greens and things like that. It's just as much applicable, I, applicable, I think, to this as well. Um, and so, and the only other question that I have, if we're really just talking about a taxidermy business, and maybe a whole host of other things. Is, is, would the taxidermy business actually be in compliance with what we got on here right now? Could we give them a special use permit?
No.
That's my, that's my view too. That's where I, I leave it at right now, yeah.
Councilmember, all of us?
Uh, my, my, my question. If somebody sell food or whatever, the house, what would be the procedure to apply for a. Uh, special permit, they have to go and talk to you first, and you will see if it applies or not, and, or.
So food is, um, a Texas state health issue. And the only time that you can sell at your house is if you have a cottage business, which is by, um, it's governed by the gut, the, the state, it has nothing to do with us. Um, but, I mean, do you remember Taste and Sea Bakery? They had a cottage business for a little while, I don't know if they had permits for it, but. I know it was a cottage business legally by the state, um, and she went through the whole process to do that. Uh, but as far as selling food out of your house, like tamales or sandwiches or whatever, you cannot do that, you have to have a commercial kitchen to do that.
And any other businesses, uh, uh, they will have to go first to talk to you and see if they qualify for that special permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Nancy?
I was just gonna say, like, this kind of reminds me of the para issue we have in the zoning and everything else, when that was a budding property, or. Um, catty corner property, which was totally illegal to, to do that zoning, and instead of going the route of zoning that as a commercial property, we chose to do conditional use permitting. When we did that, now we have other hair care places run out of the houses that you can get conditional use permits. So we've created this culture of what you're dealing with now, of happened to hold everybody liable, because there's just. Nobody's known they had to get a conditional use permit on everything. It seems like reading through all this the other night, that there's a process for this already, like when they win a conditional use permit, they go to the building official first. The process starts with you guys, get shot up to the P and Z, and the P and Z up to council. So it goes through multiple people in order to see if it actually makes sense on that, which I really like having this whole rule structure here for it. Like, I'd say, nine times out of ten, I agree with what Mister Stevens is saying about loosening these up, allowing businesses. Um, to be, you know, in homes, we wanna, we wanna celebrate entrepreneurialism and everything else like that. And the rent is extremely high here for businesses, in that regard, so I can see why that's actually occurring. Um, but when we, when we keep tight standards, then that just goes to you, if we loosen the zoning and everything else. Then that would free you guys up, and you'd say, that is a compliant business, that is a compliant business. Perfect example is parking, when we talk about that. Do you guys wanna go around and check every short terminal to make sure it has two parking, three parking spaces? How many bedrooms do you have? If that wasn't a guideline and it was an official rule, it would be a waste of y'all's time to go out and check for compliance on all that kind of stuff. And I think that follows through in some of these other regards, I think, so. My viewpoint on this is, nine times out of ten, I agree, loosen it up. Um, I actually run a business doing floor plans and stuff for real estate out of my house, and when I was reading this, I was like, am I compliant? You know, I had to go and read this, what a home occupation was, when it said it's technology office, professional office. Do the people live in the house? Does it retain the integrity of the residential home, all that kind of stuff? Do the people live in the house? Does it retain the integrity of the residential home? All that kind of stuff. So I had to become acquainted with it from that. Um, saying that. I do think like. In West Texas and in rural areas, we have a concept of what the residential area is, and that is devoid of change. I mean, if you were in a city, you moved to a city and there's an expectation of change and of development. When we live here, we don't expect that. So. Hard line for me is on this is. What you just said with the grease traps and everything else like that or removing grease. From a taxidermy perspective. I have no idea about taxidermy. I don't know what is safe, what chemicals they use. I don't know any of that. So that should start with the building official. Um, and you guys, y'all decide if it is safe. And if you do, then it it trickles up to the P and Z in your test.
Okay. That's my rescue veto.
So, um, I do believe in having home businesses. Uh, to me, if that's going to bring money or tax money, why not? If they want to do this. Why aren't we letting them do it? Or do we not need the money? The other thing is that we are closing more and more businesses downtown. I'm not going to say that they're gonna go to town because this is their. Like the taxidermy only works at night. You would never know they existed. Um. But. When we make it so hard for somebody to get a permit. Then we're also showing them that, you know. Then hide it. You know, don't we, don't go get the permit and. We'll do it in the back and guess what? The city doesn't make any money off of it. Uh, people have to survive. Right now, our our economy is really bad. I mean, I just saw. Um. I think what is it? Mrs. Hernandez closed her business on Murphy Street. And that business has been there for a long time. You know, and it continues. So either we either try and help our community. Or we're not. And that's what we're here for is to help. Our community. Not to. Uh, make it hard on them.
Councilmember Stevens.
So, so the reason I brought this up is our ordinance is very clear. And for those who have read it, says use of special use permit, this is for R one. Subject to falling uses may be permitted subject to conditional use permit is provided in section. Uh, twenty, it includes bread and breakfast, lots of people going in and out of there. Daycare services, lots of people going in and out of there. Educational facilities. Private or public, having a curriculum equal to a public elementary, high school or institutional hierarchy. Home occupations subject to approval of the home occupant. Application provisions excluding retail sales. Retail sale or service of food in any form. Libraries, museums, municipal buildings or other city installations, parks and religious assembly. My whole reason for bringing this up is we have some pretty broad bands about what can go into an R one zone. This is single family residence. And we have some, and my view is if people have businesses, bring it forward for the special use, uh, permit. Uh, to to Darren's point. Got the opportunity, most having the opportunity to work their way through. Uh, I think, and I just want to make sure we put that on the table because the other individual wants to have a business, wants to run a floor shop. Florist, I. You know, you can come up with all reasons why not, but in my view, if someone came in with a special use permit. That individual is running it out of their home, certainly would be compliant from my perspective. I think we have more things to work our way through relative to this particular individual from the taxidermy standpoint, and I know there's lots of discussions. And by the way, Jessica and Rob, we do need to have a discussion about hippo. Because I had a direct discussion for an hour today on them, where they believe they're being targeted by some actions, so. It's a separate discussion we'll have offline. Uh. But I'm all about trying to help people be successful. And small businesses who start at homes can eventually move downtown if their business grows. But if we don't give them a chance to go work things, then I think we're, uh, certainly not supporting our residents, so. My only reason for bringing this up is every time someone comes to me and says, I'd like to have a home business, I'm going to say. I'll follow, you know, the schedule of distribution annex in the zoning map and the amendments are what? I'll permit and, uh, and take forward with it. And if it makes sense, and there's an issue. Bring it back up to planning and zoning. Let's have a discussion because in my view, we had to support our businesses. That's the whole reason I brought this up.
Okay, Rob.
Um, so I guess my only question would be, do we need to change or what's y'all's opinion on? The section eighteen then, and if we're going to need to change that or not.
What is section eighteen, Rob?
Need to go. I'm sorry.
What what is section eighteen because?
Section eighteen that defines what a home occupation is. And restricts it and. What needs to be done and what isn't, what gives me my parameters on what needs to be enforced and what doesn't need to be enforced.
Next, let's go look at that because I'm not familiar with that when we have the discussion that even come up on the.
And Rob, this is Darren. Um, you said that when a lot of those things that are in our ordinance. Were state mandated, because the people happen to live in the home.
Yes, according to section eighteen, they have to live in the home.
And one question too I had, well, best was the, um, is the conditional use permit in order to even initiate the process, do they pay the fee at the start?
Yes.
Then that would be one thing that I would kind of clarify is I would hate to be the taxidermist. But paid three fifty to go through the process and then it doesn't happen. If there was some reimbursable part, that's like. Buying the hamburger and you're not sure if you're going to get it. I I think it would be better if, um, they go through that process. Because it's going to go through city council and planning and zoning and Rob's salary is already paid, Jessica's is already paid.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know if that's good or bad. Well, then I guess every you guys might get inundated with U P request.
Yeah. Phone call with somebody like, what are you doing? And being like, hey, that's maybe, that's probably not going to be it.
So I just have to add something. On this taxidermy, uh, the one that is on us, where I live on the south side, east south side. Uh, it only works at night. Um, it's only. The husband and wife. And. It's not a whole animal, whatever you want. I think it's only the head. And it's basically most of the, the skin is taken off and they just painted. That's all they do. The other thing is that. That particular business was granted. Uh, the commercial permit. When I was back in high school. And the reason I know that is because it's where I, it's in my residential area. But then all of a sudden. When the planning and zoning went in and changed the zoning without anybody knowing. That got taken away and they didn't know that. So. Their causes that problem. Who's at fault? You know? That, I mean, they have the papers. They've been paying these taxes also for all these years. All of a sudden it's like, well, no.
Sounds like a grandfather issue, but.
Uh, yes. I agree.
So I'm just to let you guys know, but the only reason we know about the taxidermy is because of a code complaint. Because of smells coming, putrid smells coming from the dumpsters and then pressure washing. Pieces of the animal into the roadway. So we would have never even knew that they were doing that at night. If we didn't have a code complaint from a neighbor that said, hey, I don't know what they're doing, but it smells really bad. And that's why we acted on it, not because we were trying to find out what people are doing in their property. So just to let you guys know, it had nothing to do with us trying to pick on anybody or anything. We acted on a code enforcement case.
One last question too from the taxidermy side. I'm sure like you and Rob probably aren't, you know, experts in taxidermy either. So the section over there, uh. What did you say, like a grease trap or something like that or something to remove stuff? I mean, that's not something we came up with. I'm assuming that would be pulled that language from another ordinance. Of somebody that may know how the stuff works or not. Being so often we just pull our ordinances from somewhere else. I'm just saying. Some research probably went into that and then it's here. There's probably a reason it exists.
See, so animals in general, uh, well, any type of processing, it works protecting our wastewater treatment plant is really what it comes down to because grease traps are in kitchens. Or anywhere you process food or animals because it collects any grease or residue left behind from it going into our sewer system. And so that's why they would need one of those. Um, they were not, I don't know if they have a drain in there. I don't really, I I didn't, we never did an internal inspection of anything, I don't think. Um, we were just outside wherever they were spraying everything off. Uh, but if they were to actually. Change that building into that, they would have to install a grease trap.
Can I get the council back on topic about home businesses in general? Um, just because. Yeah, do you have a lot of meaning?
Thank you, ma'am.
I have one last thing, just real quick, the florist. Then on the home occupation side, would the floors be a broadening of language within home occupation?
No, florist would be well within the right to apply.
Yeah, I guess I follow the ordinance. I'll say, follow the ordinance.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Rob. Stay around. It seems like there was something else that may involve you guys. All right, so moving on to discussion item G, city manager.
So the next item for discussion is the budget. And you were provided a, uh, copy within the packet that has been updated since then. I did get some feedback from councillor Nancy. Um, some of the items that have been overlooked. Um, what I wanted to do tonight, um, is kind of go over the direction that this budget is going. Um, take your feedback and then put together the final draft. Um, of a balanced budget. It is currently not balanced. Um. We do have projects and things that were included. I tried to take all of the items from specific departments that, you know, wanted to enhance their departments. So I wanted to kind of go over just a brief rundown of each one, so you guys understood how this budget would was built. Um, I did ask for input from all of the departments. And most did provide feedback, not all did. Um, revenue was not adjusted except for the interest on bank accounts. And it is anticipated to continue to rise. If you look at the projected year end for all of the interest accounts. It far exceeds our, um, budget amount for this year. Um, I always do go slightly conservative. It does leave the tax rate in the general fund at the current tax, um, collections. Um, when you're looking at it, the. Approved budget was at the higher tax collection, right? The amended budget within the actual spreadsheet shows the actual what we amended it to, which is roughly two point one million. Some of the expenses, um, for each of the departments in the general fund, um, items of interest. All departments have personnel expenses. Um, that have increased. Um, I utilized the current rates of all employees and added the percentage of increase. To cover the possible changes with a compensation study. Um, this does increase the overtime retirement and our insurance is going up as well. Non-departmental, I did reduce the library to back down to forty thousand. I increased the election expenses to twelve thousand. Because we'll be holding two elections in this fiscal year, one in November and one in May. And I did increase the audit to two hundred thousand because we are continually required to have several audits. Which do take more time in order to stay compliant with federal regulations based on our grant expenditures. Um, I combined the legal expenses into one item for city council, so I'm not reducing it. I'm just combining it instead of trying to separate it out. Administration has two new positions, one in economic development manager and another a records clerk. Um, which does result in an increase in supplies, training, travel, um, and the I T software being increased for the agenda software. Municipal court shows an increase in office supplies and an increase in their I T software to cover the annual maintenance. Police department has an annual increase for their colodic software. We do have a contract with colodic. Um, that has an annual increase every year that was approved by council. And then this year we are looking at our fleet replacement. We got a little off track on that. In order for this to truly have an impacted, a positive impact on our city, we do need to. To, uh, switch out our fleet every so many years. Currently, we have several vehicles that are three to four years past their term. So we're going to replace as many of them as you can. Building services has an increase in training and travel as well as the fleet replacement. Human resources, you'll see a huge, or not a huge, but a significant increase in their H or in their salaries. I'm moving one of the finance clerks into H R, specifically the one who manages payroll. Payroll is really tied to an H R in more, most cities. And entities, they are connected. Um, this will also provide additional assistance for our current H R director. But it will also help us clean up and streamline our insurance, um, keeping track with all of that as well. And then, of course, um, they do need some computer replacement. Um, the H R computer is seven years old, so we'd like to switch that out. Financial, you'll see that that decrease in the staffing, that does not mean we remove the director position, we just move the finance clerk position. And they also have some computer replacement, um, that needs to be done. Animal control shows an increase in janitorial supplies, um. And animal care and spray and neuter. Uh, their spray, spray, slay and neuter program, uh, has beyond, beyond successful. Um, they're definitely utilizing this program. Um, we used to get financial support from the Humane Society. I believe the Humane Society is, um, going through a little bit of a turnover. Um, and as a result, we've taken on the brunt of that, but we want to make sure we have the funding to continue the program because it does help our community. You'll notice that the building maintenance, there is no maintenance for the yard. Um, the equipment became a priority. Parks department, um, has a lease replacement and there's no longer the public level match because we don't need to continue that. The large expenses in the streets department is the loader. After getting several quotes, we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars. And that covers the general fund. What is not included in the general fund is paving. Um. So after updating the current budget, we are actually in the hole. And that does not include putting in paving material to continue any type of still building project for this next fiscal year. Um, I would like to look at utilizing some of our fund balance, um, for this next fiscal year. Um, if needed. Um, because we don't know the full impact on the compensation study. We may be able to make all the necessary adjustments and utilize the difference to go towards the paving. We also don't have a current tax rate to fully understand, um, if there's a possibility to bring in some additional revenue. That we could utilize to go towards the paving. So the big missing piece of that is the paving side. Any thoughts on the general?
Councilmember Nancy.
Want to say one thing, um. Property tax. Well. On our budget, the tax rate, we can raise it three point five percent.
That's the max we can raise it before going out for vote.
And we don't know how much revenue that would bring in. Because we don't have values, right? On the property tax side. So property tax stayed the same and we brought in two million, three point five percent of that would be seventy thousand. So possibility, if all things stay the same and there was no increase in property values or anything else, we could still raise three point five percent and get seventy thousand, is my sense. So that might be a way to to get some money toward paving. Other than that, I just think, uh, I just want to reiterate the. Um, I think it's important about the economic development, getting some of that put in there. And, um, if we can find some way to get a finance director.
That position is still in there. It's not been.
What's everything I had?
And the utility director is still in there. That's under a different fund, yes. Yeah. Enterprise. Councilmember Escobedo.
Hmm. What are you saying about Pueblo Nuevo?
Oh, so every year for the past thirty years, we budgeted a seventy five thousand dollar expense. To be moved into the reserve or Pueblo Nuevo Park. We don't have to match anymore.
Councilmember, all of us.
On the parks, uh, and recreation is, uh. Schedule any amount of money to fix the Medina Park.
The Medina Park is being scheduled to fix this before the end of, the deadline is September thirty. Thank you. So this is good here. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, mayor. Um. Some things I'm noticing on here, tourism fund, you might have said some of these too, but I'm I'm just noticing and want to go a little more. Yeah, okay, so on. The revenue of tourism, I'm seeing a million in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, and then six fifty. Forty percent de- decrease at least by my math, uh, into twenty four, twenty five. Is there a big reason for that?
Yes, so the that fund, we utilize the reserves or fund balance. To cover some of the capital improvements. We did not complete those this fiscal year and they're not included in next fiscal year budget. That is going to be a separate conversation with council to determine the. Direction you want to go with the visitor center. Currently, there is four hundred and seventy thousand in capital improvements for that.
That money is just sitting ready.
Well, no, that's the expense. The money will come out of the fund balance, but I. But I would like to have that as a separate discussion, not be included in the budget, to actually understand the direction that not only. The visitor center wants to go, but the council wants to go, and how much more we want to invest in this, this space.
Yeah, maybe they got the nicest building in the city. Look, going further a little bit, uh, I'm looking then, of course, at uh, some expense side now and. What I'm noticing on city employees, like you said a minute ago, I'm noticing that it's less. In most of these, and you noticed that there is like a, a move around of like an employee to a different pocket, so that's the only area that's actually more. How are we gonna pay people more if we're not proposing more in our budget?
We are proposing more, but we're proposing it off of the current actual expenses.
Okay.
And not on a already padded on top of the pad.
Got you.
So I went through and actually updated our, all of our employees, what they're currently being made. And then added that increase to that. Um, there are additional, like I said, spaces for uh, utilities for street department. Police department, those are all included, but instead of, we budgeted five hundred thousand, but our actual expenses are three fifty. Instead of doing the additional on the five hundred, um, and having that extreme expense that isn't necessary, I went off of it.
I'm not gonna go too far down this rabbit hole, but it sounds to me like you already know what we're gonna be giving raises to, and so I think.
Well, so the automatic decision council, the dis- well, the discussion was is we're automatically gonna start with the lower end employees.
Yeah.
And so even those, the new. So even the new positions are already in there at fifteen dollars. And then anyone who was under, was put at fifteen plus for the, so we're automatically trying to incorporate everything. Um, and speaking with Evergreen, it was also discussed that. Um, my estimate of going ten, eleven, twelve percent, they, they, uh, are thinking is really extreme. Because most of the time, when they're looking at their studies, it's between five and eight.
And then the only other things that I see here is, just like you said, the, the big thing is a change in streets. Uh, it, it, there's, you know, you notice there's a decrease there. Um, I'm not seeing too much more towards, in fact, less in water and, and uh, sewer is a little bit more. And waters, oh no, yeah, tiny, tiny bits here and there. Um. I'm a little worried that we're not, uh, you know, throwing the money where, where the folks have told us to, to throw it at. I get that there's pretty low abilities for us to get more money, but at the same time. Sixteen thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars or whatever that additional revenue, I'm hoping that we can allocate that towards the parties that. That are constituents, best as to do.
So that would be under the paving. When you're looking at the enterprise and you're looking at the water infrastructure, we kept the budget. Fairly the same as it currently is. When we talk about those projects that we really want to start investing in. I didn't want to put it in the budget padding, as some people will call it, or hey, we're gonna put five hundred thousand to line replacement, but in reality. We don't have the ability to replace the line.
Sure.
So when we have a project come up or a funding opportunity come up, I would rather come back and amend and adjust our budget. To accommodate that specific project. So if Johnny or our new utility director came in and says, hey, I've got the staff, I've got the plan, I've got the time. This is what I want to do. I'd rather come back to the council and say. We're gonna use a little bit of our reserves, we're gonna combine a couple of our current budgeted line items and we can do this project.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thanks, uh, Mayor. Uh, so we, we've talked about the ad valorem taxes, three hundred thousand dollars. You know, while we could certainly raise property taxes, seventy thousand isn't buying us much. Uh, and so I'm looking forward to when we get all that resolved, right? Though you aren't, so this three thousand dollars is a lot of money. The other, on the uh, expense side, I'm surprised that the. Uh, budget for police department went up two hundred and twenty thousand, loved their all and the team. I'm just wondering, that's, seems to be an inordinate increase. Compared to where everything else is. And in, in my view, a thirty-three percent reduction in streets is unsustainable.
So the reduction is only because we're missing the paving and that, that's where I want to, tax rate would definitely give us a little push.
Yeah.
Um, but we did add a new position within the police department. Um, and then they do have the recurring fees that are contracted. Colodic, they go up ten grand. Um, their fleet replacement will be significantly higher this year. Um, apparently. Vehicles have gone up. And then first having them outfitted, um, and they do have the, the takers.
So I, I get all that, I just, like many others, uh. There's a lot of work yet to be done. What I think would be helpful for all of us, Megan, is. Uh, you know, we're supposed to have a budget approved. As you all know, the schedule better than most of us, like next month. And my sense is, we're not even close to being there. Uh, and my recommendation to you would be. Maybe you just adopt the budget for next year the same as right now to allow us the time to work our way through. So we can have the fruitful discussions on somewhat tough issues. Uh, that may be a thought. I know you're gonna get tax rates set and all that. Really be helpful for us to see a schedule. Cause I think we're gonna have. Uh, a longer discussion about this. So that's, but part of that is getting tax rates set and all that bunch of stuff, so. Help us, here's what the schedule looks like, so we can plan, because it sounds like we're gonna have long meetings. So we got, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Did you want me to go over all of the others that we obeyed this composition?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're okay. Alright, good. Alright, so that'll end discussion items. We're gonna take a short break. And then when we come back, you will vote to continue beyond nine o'clock. Alright.
And we are back at eight thirty four P M. City Secretary, I need a motion to extend beyond nine o'clock. I need a second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. City Secretary, all council members voted in favor of extending beyond nine o'clock. So it was unanimous. Let's move to action items. Action item A belongs to city manager.
Approve order twenty twenty four dash zero eight dash zero one and order for a special election on November fifth, twenty twenty four. For the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Alpine, Texas. Turn proposed amendments to the existing home rule charter designating the place at which said election is to be held. Making provisions for the conduct of that election and other provisions. And relating to the purpose of the order, providing for conduct of the election and providing an effective date.
I need a motion.
I move to approve order twenty twenty four oh eight oh one.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? City Manager, start us out.
This is the next step into the charter revisions. What you'll find in your packet is a brief rundown. This discussion started in October twenty three. Took off in January of twenty four. And the propositions were starting to be discussed and drafted in March of twenty four. On July sixteenth, council made final decisions regarding those propositions. Included within the order are nine proposals or propositions addressing the review of the city charter at least every five years. The removal of council ability to voluntarily annex. Annexation procedures shall be undertaken and should compliance with state law. The term districts to be amended to ward, wards, excuse me. Council member terms amended to three years with a two term limit. Clarification on the mayor and mayor pro ten ability to vote in the case of a tie vacancy procedures. City may appoint a law firm and its lawyers collectively to serve as the city attorney. And the last one regarding the miss of court judge, sorry for the typo. Term to run current currently with the office of the mayor. The deadline to call the election for November is August nineteenth, which is why it is on this agenda. Included is a copy of the actual order outlining all of the specifics. This if passed does have to be signed by all council members. And then you have all of your propositions. Once this is passed, you can import with starting to get the information needed to get the ballots prepared.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Well, I don't think six thousand dollars is enough to cover all this. Because I believe if we're going to be successful, we're going to have to do some mailings and educate voters to make some decisions. And so I just. I'm adding six thousand dollars is the expenditure to do the election. We got more money to put into this to be successful.
Okay, councilmember Escobedo.
I didn't want to make, and I don't know if we can make a change or not to to the city council terms. Around three to four, we cannot do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
It would have to be as an amendment. So she'd have to move to him in the original motion to include that, that would change. And then it would have to be seconded.
Okay.
But it can.
We're at three right now. That's what's on, yeah, I just, I just read it, but.
Only because I wanted it to be like the commissioners, you know, on that. On those terms, kind of like that, instead of having people have an extra one in between the right. If it was three.
Yeah.
It would be off.
It would be an election every November, correct? You said that's the way it was.
We are not a November election.
I mean, every May, I'm sorry.
We are a May election. So to restructure to four year terms, you would have to also designate how that would move forward and who would be elected on what years.
Which right now, the way it's written, there would be an election every May, correct?
Yes, and that's currently how ours is too.
Yeah. Okay, so it really doesn't matter when they're holding their elections.
No, I mean, it's every year in May. If you wanted to go to.
Four, then it would be every two years.
Yeah, it'd be about every two years. So we would really need to discuss that in our next council meeting.
Pass the deadline.
Yeah, pass the deadline.
You gotta do it now.
We couldn't just, if we wanted to, I'm not, I'm not worried about either, but just to remove that one if we wanted to amend it by removing.
You can amend it whichever direction you want and can vote out as a whole. You can amend it to four, someone can second, maybe the, it really is the council.
May I say something? It, it sounds to me like the three is the step in the right direction of where you're trying to go. And I'll note that we have another agenda item that is talking about a November election on here. Just because that's germane to this topic too. And so if we wanted to get it to four. Line up with county, even national elections that are more widely. Uh, you know, uh, more folks come out to. We can make that step, uh, or the council that's after me can make that step.
Yeah, if the representative is able to push that through correctly, the state legislature.
State legislated.
Yeah, you have it on, it's, it's I H on here.
But then we have to have a, a state representative who's successful and fit in that.
It, it has a few steps. Like I said, there's multiple. People are walking, we're walking together, I guess.
I don't know. I think at this point, we've talked about it so much, we voted on it, we passed it, passed it.
Good with it. I'm saying we're going in the right direction towards what you'd like Lucy and then, but when, you know, in another year, when we get all that other stuff straightened out, bring it up. Put it it towards four and say, this is the reason why we want to do this.
Is we have to figure out too what wards elected when.
So Fort Stockton, in their resolution to their Congress representative actually outlined the direction they would have to take in regards to not only updating their ordinance, but updating their charter to reflect those different changes in.
For November?
Yes, because they went to a November. So they had it all pre-planned for when they went to the November election that they would automatically review and update their charter to reflect this.
But I'm talking about these terms. I think we already talked about the three years. So we spent too much time to agree three years and it's too late or take more time to change it, I believe.
So for this ordinance, it's to approve the order for a special election. Um, and in the order, councilmember Stevens pointed out that it says six thousand dollars for the order. So is that an amendment you wouldn't want to make to increase that then?
I think that's in the coming days, not that we're.
Oh, so it's not the actual order. So we wouldn't need to do that here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I want to spend more money.
Okay.
Okay.
That's mine.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to approve the order for the amendment?
I have a question on the actual order real quick. Uh, it's regarding, uh, what we were talking about. And I, I will go through and read all of these because we want to be able to educate everybody, but uh, and this might be for the city attorney as well. Are all of these in the correct writing that the answer that we're hoping for is yes, that they would all vote yes on all of them?
I believe, yeah, I say, I believe it is worded to kind of.
It is.
They're all written in the way that we would say. Yes, okay. We want to make it easy for folks if that's what we want. If that's what we discussed, that the city wouldn't be able to make an actual judgment on how they voted. But if council members of the mayor wanted to go out and say, everybody vote yes, you could do that. And so just to make it easy for our personal seats to be able to educate folks.
Right, right.
What's best, what we think is best personally for the city.
So are we ready to vote on approving the order for the election?
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Stone.
Aye.
Aye.
You need a motion.
We already have it.
Okay.
All right. City Secretary, this motion for approving order twenty twenty four dash oh eight dash oh one for a special election has been approved unanimously by all city council members voting affirmative. Moving on to action item B, this one belongs to city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven dash oh one. An ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of the unimproved portion of South Fifth Street lying between lot five, block one and lot ten. Block two of Ferguson Second Edition to the city of Alpine Brewster County, Texas to Horro Cultural Consulting LLC. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty, directing that funds from the sale of the city's interest be deposited into the general fund for the purpose of street improvements. Providing for terms and conditions of such thereof.
Unannounced motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
So at the last reading of this, we asked for it to be postponed in order to allow for additional time to review the utilities. Upon reviewing the utilities, there is a map included in the packet. There are multiple lines that run through this portion, and we're not just talking about mains. I know that we've talked about evans with other properties. But this has not only a water main, a sewer main, but it has multiple service lines as well that are located within this short, um, property that is owned by the city. And there's also a water meter located towards the upper part of the property and that services another property. And that would have to be accessed. In discussion with the utility interim, um, he did ask or suggest that this property not be sold. Um, on account of all of the lines that are within this short period or short distance. Um, these are the ones we know of. Um, that we could locate or we could find. He is present here tonight. If you'd like to ask him additional questions.
Come on up, Johnny.
Just your end of.
Just state your name and department for those on Zoom. Thank you for being here this evening.
Yes, I am. Johnny Martin.
No.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we have service lines going all over the place on that property. As the way the city manager said, there's one on south. Going straight up. I mean, you're talking about fifteen, twenty feet from the property and. You know, and I located it, but no telling there, there could be some more. I, I don't even know.
We don't have ground penetrating radar here.
So we don't know. And, and you'll, you'll notice within the map and you, you'll see that they not only go north and south, but they go west and east. And they go up further into the properties located, not directly off that street, but off on that hill. So that's been the big concern. I understand that there is a possibility of easement. Um, I guess the concern is if the city council is going to move forward with selling properties and allowing easements. I, I, I do ask that when an easement is granted, they're not going to build. We would still have to have access to this property regularly because we have meters that do get bred. Um. Is the city wanting to sell property to get it on our property tax? Um, and then are we going to have a system in place to manage the easements? Um, and if people aren't going to build on these. I mean, do we necessarily want to sign? These are all conversations that we should have at some.
Councilmember Nance.
I think those are all great questions, and I'm wondering, did we ask those same questions for the bow property that we just did?
Yes.
That's where my mind goes is on that is this is not going to be the final one that we have. So I don't want to think about this property and that property, who owns whatever, anything else like that. I just like simplicity when it comes across our table. And we can say this has a water meter that we need access to. So we could tell this person why this is a specific time that we would not, um, sell.
But there's numerous lines on that property that what y'all want to sell or whatever. And we got sewer, you got water, you, you mean.
On this one.
There's a man on that one, and the one you're discussing today.
So with those, it has the one sewer main. Or wasn't the service line builder behind in the alley? And they were adamant about not building, but they're going to utilize it for inventory for their plants and they are going to gate it. Um, if the main has a leak or something happens, we would have the access. You have more lines and more probability.
I understand your worry. They're actually saying that they would not build on here as well. But our worry is we can't hold them, right?
We can blow at any time. There you go.
They could go all the time. At the same way that the boys could build it anytime on that property.
I had sewer, I mean, we had.
Yes.
Water and sewer, two different things.
I'm learning. What is her name?
So we're smart.
Councilmember Stevens.
What is motivating them to want to buy this property?
You know, I don't know. It's a hill, the mountain.
I know, but are they gonna?
I, I don't know what they want to be. I don't know what they want to be.
Does would, uh, our building services know?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, come on. See, I told you you needed to stay. I wasn't going to let you go home.
It's a carrot code, I think, over that.
Yeah, right. Okay, state your name and.
Uh, Jessica Isley, I work for the building services department. Um, so they own the vacant lot two, um, I guess it'd be the east. They demolished that house that was on it. And they own the property to the west. And they want, I, they most likely want to buy it to replat it together. Because we had a discussion about it because they had a little shed out there and the house was demolished. We said you have to remove the shed with it. And they said, well, what if we replatted? And I said, you'd have to be adjacent.
What do they want to do with it?
I think they just wanted to be a part of their yard. I, I don't think they plan on building anything on it. I think they just wanted, because they want to plaid it all together as one, it's a parcel.
That would be the question though, is it, it's going to be a yard, then we would have theoretical access to it. If they were going to build a short term rental or, uh, you know, ADU or anything on it, then we lose access to those.
What happens when they sell?
Yeah, exactly.
But then we have to have someone keep those of the easement.
We, coming back to the same thing to the words, if that property sold, we have the same limits, right? We can't hold them on that easement just because it's a main or sewer.
We can hold them on the easement and we have the exact same issue out in the sunny wind area. Where a woman built her garage storage unit over a water line that did bust. And it required her to move it after we dug halfway underneath it to try. Yes, making it very unsafe to re, that was a water main.
So we legally, why could we do that but not do that here, but easement was provided?
I think it's just there's too many unanswered questions and are they going to gate it? And we have to have special access. Um, I mean, we, uh, we didn't know the intention was to replat that wasn't brought to us.
Even know that either, yeah.
I only know because, uh, the demolition permit that was, was pulled for that house, those up there is a dilapidated building. And so when we met on site for the demo final, there was still a storage shed sitting there and it's, that has to go too because of ordinance, everything has to be removed off that log. And they said they want to purchase that property to make it all one big piece of property. And I, one, I, it's been a while, but I want to say they said for parking, but don't quote me on that. I don't remember. Because they were going to, they want to build something on that property, but it's not a house and that was the problem. So they wanted the side yard.
If that is infrastructure there too, that terminates. It's not like if we capped it at the end, then there's no, we're not interrupting flow from one, eight point A to point B. Is that a possibility to just, if they were digging in there to just cap that, uh, you said this is water?
That, that doesn't make that a meter does not go to the existing property, goes to another house south of that.
Okay.
On the other side of the.
Okay.
Okay, um, so exactly where is this? I want to make sure.
Right, right behind the Catholic church, all the way up the hill.
Okay, okay. I was on the other side. I kept getting confused. Okay.
Oh, wow. On Fifth Street, all the way up.
On Fifth, okay.
Councilmember, all of us.
Um, well, I think it's up to you guys, you know, you know more than we know if it's good or not.
I think that if it has that many lines, it's kind of dangerous.
And no telling.
I mean, if they feel, yeah, that wasn't actually because it is.
They didn't say that they want to combine those with, how do we know they are telling us the truth, but they want to be all there. And after they buy, they can do whatever they want to.
Councilmember Stone.
Um. I had mixed reviews on the last one. Uh. That we did, I understand that we could very much do, uh, an easement or something like that, but it sounds like we're not organized to be able to do that at this time, uh, to my understanding. Um. You know, I saw that the highest price on here is about sixty thousand bucks. I'd hope we'd be at least doing that. It, there was, there is five different, uh, estimates when we were trying to come up. I think the highest one was sixty K. Lowest one was maybe twenty or thirty. Um, and, uh, you know, I'd say if they're, if they want to buy it for twice that with the easement on it, that might give us a reason to follow easements more. That'd be my only. Sell for a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand bucks and they'll probably say no.
From what I'm hearing from our, our utility director.
I'm already against it.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to.
If we want to do it.
We wouldn't be able to bill, have easements because we don't know what's there, exactly.
Well, so this property's market value is three thousand one hundred.
Oh, there's not a, we're, we're not a different one here.
Was a basis under which Paul Lefler pulled all this data together, but it's thirty one hundred dollars. Okay. Because it's point zero nine six acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, what else?
It's a mountain.
Yeah.
To, councilmember Stevens.
Uh, my only comment is, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to sell it because of all the, uh, lines that are there.
They say on page one sixty six, sales comparison approach, the highest one is sixty thousand dollars on there.
Yes, that's a relative comparison to properties, not two point zero nine six acres.
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, let's go ahead and if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
One quick question. We've got a few more of these coming up immediately, right?
Yeah, one more, I think on Brown and, no, yeah, Brown and Sixteen.
You want to go ahead and speak to that one? What, what?
It's not, it's not all the. So I am adding to the next agenda, sale of property discussion.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Stone.
Um, um, oh. Nay.
No.
Nay.
Member Stevens.
Nay.
Okay, so city secretary, that's okay. Um. Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven dash oh one has failed. All council members voted nay. All right, moving on to action item C, city manager.
Thank you. Thank Johnny. Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight dash zero one and ordinance amending appendix C zoning to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending appendix D zoning to remove the provision that provides the ability for the city council or fine and zoning commission to initiate spot zoning or non-continuous zoning designation with exceptions and many the application fee from two fifty to three fifty.
I need a motion.
Move to approve, uh, first reading of twenty twenty four oh eight oh one.
Okay, councilmember Stevens seconded. City manager, start the discussion.
So in prior meetings, we discussed the zoning ordinance that outlines the ability for council or planning and zoning to rezone a property, um, at their request. This ordinance is being updated to reflect the changes as outlined with the exception that if council or planning and zoning move forward with it, that they provide the following. And. Right guys. That includes the following information, and that is regarding that it's initiated by council fine and zoning commission in alignment with the Texas Supreme Court established guideline. We also include it as outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. Remember, if we move forward with the comprehensive plan and it is adopted, that the council must be in line with the zoning requirements. And then the other item that was updated was in mind with all of our application fees, um, from two fifty to three fifty.
And we have Rob and Jessica here to speak on this if council has any questions for them. All right, so we'll start with council member, all of us.
Oh. This is to, uh, it's not the initiated or spoke, it's a spot zoning. But we're not talking about what is already, we're talking about the future.
So, yeah, we're talking about the future. So currently the council does have the ability to spot zone, but it, there's requirements that need to, or I'm sorry, expectations that should be followed that are outlined in one of the lawsuits against another city, which is what we included in here specifically outlining that council and the planning and zoning to this vote. Um, can initiate a, a change in zoning as long as it's in alignment with the Texas Supreme Court established guideline. So it's still giving you the ability and it's still giving the planning and zoning commission the ability. Spot zoning in general is illegal, but the Texas Supreme Court ruled and came back that it can be accepted as long as certain conditions or guidelines are met.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Escobedo.
I'm fine with the way it's written now.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens.
We rejoice.
Councilmember Nance.
Comments.
Councilmember Stone.
Ready to vote.
All right, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Me.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, city secretary, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh eight dash oh one has been approved unanimously by city council. Moving on to action item D, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eight dash oh two. And ordinance memorialized memorializing the city war designations for properties annexed in the city limits of Alpine, providing finding the fact severability, effective date, proper notice and hearing clause.
I need a motion. I need a motion.
Make a motion.
I need a second. Okay, city manager.
So in January of this year, we had a discussion involving a gentleman who had thought he was in a certain ward. But when looking at his designated, uh, ward, it was actually a different ward. So what we did is we went back and viewed, uh, the, the majority of the work here and we looked at all of the recent annexations. And then tried to find where council had designated what ward it should have been. There was no formal documentation indicating whether it should be in Ward Two, whether it should be in Ward Four. Prime example, it, the Skyway Gardens Two housing has not been designated a ward. They are within the city limits but have no, capable of voting because they're not assigned a ward. So what Gio has done is he's gone through and we've looked at all of the different sections that were annexed. Um, and then we put together a ordinance to memorialize each of these annexation and designate the ward in which they belong. This way we can get it over to our elections administrator, Lauren Esbaum. She can update it on our end and we can get those voter registration cards updated and those who are not included in our voter, uh, I say, I don't know if you want me to go through each one, but all the information is in the packet.
Hey, council, do you need Megan to go through each one? No? Okay, any discussion, council? I'll just open it.
Thanks for doing the hard work.
Yes, thank you, Gio. Are we ready to vote?
I have a quick, uh, just comment that, uh, it'd be interesting to see if we can work towards in the future, getting these registered voter numbers a little closer to equal across the wards. Um, that's, that's just a comment.
City secretary ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight dash oh two has been approved unanimously by city council. Okay, moving on to action item E, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight dash oh four, a resolution of the city council amending appendix B building service fees, setting the rates and fees for city building services for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-four oh eight oh four.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
So as part of our annual review of all of our fees, this one is coming, uh, before council. And it was brought to my attention that effective September first, twenty twenty-three, House Bill thirty-four ninety-two prohibited municipal authorities from imposing certain value-based fees and requires disclosure of certain information related to subdivision construction. After having a brief discussion with Robert Rukus, our building official, um, he took the lead in investigating and researching to see how other cities were doing it. In order to stay compliant with the new state law, um, we are required to update our current, uh, fee structure. You'll notice that the first section is completely taken out. That was because it was based on the evaluation, which is no longer allowed. Um, his recommended changes are listed below, um, one, becoming a uniform and structure for both residential and commercial. Increasing the inspection fee from twenty-five to fifty dollars to cover, cover the actual cost of inspection. Remove the valuation fee-based permits and update to include all trade permits. That is the highlighted section of the updated, uh, fees. That includes basically every permit currently available. Um, that is your HVAC, um, that's electrical, and then breaking them down more specific. And then it also includes the actual fee per trade per permit. And then he did review the International Council, which is the ICC, to include all of the appropriate trades. What if we missed one? So he wanted to make sure we encompassed everything that we could possibly come across residential and commercial. He did review other cities, um, San Antonio is the closest to being compliant with the new requirements. And those were his notes. He, he wasn't gonna be here tonight. He is at training, but he is online if you have additional questions. We do not know the complete impact of the new fee structure on our collections. And we will have to kind of test it out the first year to see, um, how much money we do bring in. Does it cover actual costs? Um, and of course, move forward with the new changes for the following.
Okay, alright, so Rob is online still. He stuck around for this one and so did Jessica. She's here in person. So she stuck around specifically for this one. After this one, she, she should be able to go because I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. So councilmember Nance?
Uh, one question I had is, say, at the bottom of page two twenty-eight, the trade permit fees that list a permit fee per square foot and an amount due. Is that a, is that the, would it be the total adding of those two fees? Like, the four thousand square foot would be one thirty-seven eighteen plus fifty dollar inspection fee? That's the only question I had.
Okay, councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the old schedule versus the new schedule. Uh, and, and the amount of fees you all collect. Does this increase, decrease, or you have no idea?
So we really don't know the impact until we at least get it implemented and see how it runs the first couple of months. And Rob's come on. Do you have a response to that, Rob?
Um, it would really depend, but by the House bill, we're not supposed to make a profit off of it. It's supposed to just cover the city's expenses to do the inspections.
So you believe that when it's all said and done, if you're looking at it over an annual basis, you're gonna cover your costs for running your department for doing building inspections?
That would be, um, awesome to say yes, but with the current pattern I've seen in the city and then also working here, um, for the last eight years, I don't. Um, we're, there's no way we're gonna cover the entire cost of, uh, the building services with, you know, inspections.
Yeah, I, I, so I, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this, but I really do think we ought to take a hard look at it. You know, I think about construction, uh, and we think about streets and water systems and all the other things we gotta go do. I happen to be in favor of impact fees and we add something new that would be including the cost of the home or the building or whatever. Uh, and when I look at this, I actually think your revenue is gonna go down, not stay flat or go up. That's, you know, and, and this guy who's putting additional on the library, my fees would be a heck lot cheaper following this ordinance than they would be under the curtain ordinance. So it's just, it's a valuation of one and building houses, things like that. I just think your revenue is gonna be so. I'm gonna support it, but I think you guys ought to take a hard look at what it ought to look like and come back to us in the future. That's that's kind of my view. I don't want to slow things down because we gotta be legally compliant. The only other comment I would make, uh, is, and this is related to building fees. When we look at, uh, asking people to change out their electric lights to be dark sky compliant. There's one case where I would see, I don't think we ought to charge a permit fee for that because we want people to be compliant. And so when you look at it to update, please take that into account. Those are my comments.
Okay, councilmember Escovedo?
I agree with Rick.
About the dark sky compliant?
Yeah, definitely. Might also be that in the piece, I mean, it's gonna bring up now, but we do have to be legal.
Alright. Okay, councilmember Nance?
No comment.
That's member, all of us? Councilmember Stone?
Agree with, uh, Rick. I think, uh, you know, we oughta, like in a lot of places, we oughta figure out what the number that we're aiming for and figure out how to get there.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
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 Bye.
City secretary, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight dash oh four passed unanimously with all council members voting in favor. Thank you, Jessica, for being here and thank you, Rob, for being online while you're at training. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jessica.
Bye. Okay, moving on to action item F. And also to note that Abby Branch is online, so Abby, if you would put your camera on if possible, in case we have any questions. Alright, councilmember Stevens?
Yes, thanks very much, mayor. Uh, I propose that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight dash zero five. A resolution allocating expenditure of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Hotel Act Tax Fund proposed Oaks Preservation Solutions LLC to conduct a study that results submitted by Post Oak for a national register of historic places. An establishment of a downtown historic district that is recognized at the federal and state level and is submitted by Post Oak for a national register of historic places for Coconut baseball field that's recognized as a federal and state, uh, historic place so the business owners can apply for and receive federal and state grant funding without action by the city of Alpine. Further, that Post Oak Preservation Solutions work closely with the historic Alpine at no cost to the city of Alpine other than the expenditure of the hot funds so that the building owners and the city are aligned in the outcome.
I need a motion.
That is the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, great deal. Alright, discussion. Um, do you want to start the discussion?
Start discussion, we've talked about this a lot. Uh, unfortunately, uh, when I was not able to attend a city council meeting, asked that it be postponed. Uh, I think it's the right thing to go do. As you've seen in the packet, there's a bazillion people who go support this. Uh, because it has to provide the opportunity to get the historic register of places without putting, us putting a burden on it. And allows us to bring more of other people's money to the city of Alpine to support business owners doing the things they do best, which is bringing people in and upgrade their buildings.
Okay, good deal. And remember Abby's online. We'll give her the opportunity to speak if needed. Um, councilmember Stone?
I like the idea, like that it comes from pot. Um, Abby, I'm gonna pose the question one last time, just so we're fully transparent. Do you have any buildings in either of these areas that we're gonna be alloc- allocating money towards?
No, I don't. I only own a residential property in Alpine. It's not in that.
Thank you, Abby. I'm good.
Councilmember, all of us?
No, we're already discussing, we're ready to vote.
Hey, councilmember Nance?
I do have questions, Abby. Um, so this thirty-nine thousand, does this mean the proposal is set in stone or can the boundaries, like we had discussed, be, um, amended?
Oh, oh, no, absolutely. The boundaries will be discussed and amended. Um, the first, you know, there, there's many phases to this. The first phase is just the general survey. And then in that survey, um, Post Oak Preservation is gonna identify all of our historical resources wi- and, and within, and we, we can, we can all come together before then. This isn't gonna start tomorrow. It'll likely start in, in the fall. We'll also have to have some other town halls and stuff because we want everybody, you know, to understand and, and be excited about it and, and not, um, have misinformation. Um, so no, the surveys, we, we, I mean, the, the, the boundaries are all, um, are all negotiable right now. I'm absolutely. What we want to be cognizant of is, um, you want this to be a, um, a district that is cohesive. And you don't want it to start and stop and start and stop. You know, you want it to, to make sense unless we decide to do multiple, multiple districts. Um, I hope that answers your question.
That does, and really I just wanted to make sure we weren't, um, some static thing here that it was gonna be a process where there was gonna be feedback for, so that's music to my ears.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you for, you know, this is gonna be a piece of economic development towards our city and capital infusion, so it ties in and great job.
Thank you. I'm excited, y'all.
Okay, Cal. You wanna?
I have, I have a question.
Okay, Abby, are you okay if we add you to the October agenda to discuss the boundaries?
Oh, no, yeah, that's fine. Which, yeah, and it, yeah, just let me know at the time and I'll, we'll be there. We would also like Post Oak, um, preservation, you know, at least to be a part of it via Zoom or in person.
Would they know the boundaries by then?
Just discussion.
Just discussion.
Because he just finds you about moving the boundaries?
Councilmember Escovedo?
I don't have any questions, sorry, but I'm very clear.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, council.
Hi.
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 Alright, city secretary, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight dash oh five has been approved unanimously by city council. Okay, moving on to action item G, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight dash oh six, a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-nine capital improvement plan.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh eight oh six as presented.
I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager, start us out.
Um, so this is the, the same draft that was provided to council at the last meeting. Um, it does include more information, including, um, an extended summary at the beginning of it. It provides more of a description of how we come to this process. It also outlines the difference between the capital improvement and how we utilize it for capital assets. Um, it does break down the additional, uh, funding for each of the four years, um, by department as well. We do not budget, um, the improvements per fiscal year, um, currently. Um, one of the discussions I've had with council is how I'd like to change the process moving forward, especially within the budget and the CIP. The CIP should be a long-term, um, plan, um, with bigger projects, bigger funding. Um, it does break down each of the, um, items that are, are being requested by departments. It also does include a section where you can see where things are either on hold because we are not moving forward currently with the project. Um, but also what we've completed. So you'll see that we have completed a good portion of the assets. Um, not actual improvement plans, um, which is actually really nice and it is broken down by department. And it provides a little description for each of them and then those are estimated costs, not actual. Um, over time, these costs will change. Um, so each year we will need to update the actual estimated cost to reflect a little bit better. And so it has, um, lengthened a little bit over the years. But I think this year provides a little bit more feedback, especially for the public. When looking at the capital improvement plan, um, the different funds that it impacts, um, the water being the largest.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, all of us?
No comments.
Councilmember Escovedo? Councilmember Stevens?
So Megan, you, you get this question out of me every time. Uh, and before the question, nice job putting together the summary. If our, for example, our visitor center update, twenty twenty-five, financial plan, thirty thousand dollars, would I find that in the vote?
No, so in prior discussion, I did not put any of the capital improvement because I want to have a separate discussion of the direction we want to go with that visitor center. So it's not included because it's actually four hundred and seventy altogether.
But that's, but generally, this is your intent. But the real approval of expenditures when it shows up in budget.
Yes, so that's kind of how I want to start taking the direction. Is there would be another item that actually outlines what part is within the budget? And I want to remove capital assets out of the CIP. This is your smart meters. This is your replacing the south side of the water system. This is where we're placing. These are your bigger plans that when you look at it, these are actual expenditures, um, reserved. Like, we're, we're, we built the money up and now we're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
I'm noticing smart water meters on here. Um, are we actually planning to fund that and starting next year?
So the idea is to, so we do have a little bit of money set aside under reserves that we could allocate. Currently, it's not allocated because we do not have a proper plan in place to move forward with it. I don't want to include things in the budget just to include it in the budget and it not be utilized for the actual intent because we have an over expenditure and we pull it out.
Yeah.
So down the road, yes.
So should that be changed or is this a wish list?
This has always been considered a wish list.
Okay.
And that's where I'm trying to remove that and make it more of a reality.
And so then more, more of this is like when we actually have a discussion, next meeting, another meeting after, when we get into nitty gritty, we get to say, let's pull a couple of these items and actually fund them.
We could do that if you're, if you're gonna pull it from the reserves, you're not gonna pull it.
From the actual budget, okay? Or from the money.
So it doesn't have to be included in the current budget?
Yeah.
Because October first, we can come back and say, okay, you have one point two million in reserves. I want to go ahead and allocate. And then that's just a budget amendment.
Sure.
So the budget, I'm trying to look at it from a strictly operational, um, aspect.
Okay.
And actually have a CIP plan that we amend our budget to include because we have that money set aside somewhere else.
Okay, okay. Sounds good.
Councilmember Nance?
I'm just gonna say, I view this as an iteration on you updating the CIP and the budget. You know, I'm here two years and looking at. You know, here two years and looking at previous budgets, every year you improve a little bit, make it a little more graphical and. Practical to, you know, a citizen and everything else. So applaud you for that. Looks good.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Councilmember Stone.
Hi.
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 All right, City Secretary, Resolution twenty-two-four dash O eight dash O six has been approved unanimously. Action item H, Councilmember Stone.
There, approved resolution twenty-two-four O eight O seven, a resolution requesting support from state representatives in the Texas Legislature. With the passing of bill authorizing the city to transition from May general elections to November general elections. Okay.
Okay, that's the motion.
That's the motion.
I need a second. Okay, discussion. Start the discussion, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. So we started talking about this, a meeting, maybe two meetings back. This is just looking at trying to, of course, reach out to our state representatives. Learn about the process and hopefully get a bill in and passed during that legislature. And a similar thing happened in Fort Stockton. They went through that, that same procedure. And with the hope of trying to save a little bit of money, especially if we did eventually move to a four-year elections that were actually matching up with the county. And also with the hope of being able to bring out a bigger turnout.
Councilmember Alivas.
Well, I think that is a good idea, but I think right now it has so many things on our plate that it has to go. Take care of first. So I think that we should leave that for the future.
Okay, Councilmember Nance.
I had to go look at this and. See how it, you know, how Fort Stockton did it, how they pushed it through and everything else like that. And it's interesting when they, when you see. I guess it was Morales or Blanco, whoever kind of pushed that, sure.
Yeah.
The language that they used in the Texas election code. That's pretty fascinating. Like a county this big, you know, I think it's. Whenever county, Fort Stockton's here. And population over nine, nine thousand or whatever it was. Good to vote against this one for just one reason. Like I view it as a. Like when you're installing software on your computer, when you're installing software on your computer, you click next, 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 next. Only because all the documentation, all the how-tos are written for a default installation. So if anything ever goes wrong, you're right in the boat with everyone else on how it is. I think the, like Eva said, meaning the intent behind it is wonderful. I just would prefer to stay in the school of fish and do it as everyone else is because the Texas election code is probably pretty complex.
Councilmember Escovedo.
I thought that we were going to move from the May to the November.
That is the motion right here.
We have to get it. We have, council has to support a resolution in order to get one of either our state representative or congressperson to try to do an active bill.
If I might, I just want to note that election numbers in a, a general election in November third, twenty-twenty. We had. In Ward two, two hundred and thirty votes in twenty-twenty on, in the November election and this May election, and mine are just as bad. Nothing going on there. But we had for Ward two. We had, you'll give me. A moment on this last one. Doesn't seem to have Ward two on our website.
The Ward two election was canceled.
It's canceled, cancel. Uh, because you didn't, didn't have it, didn't have it. Okay, so. Yeah, Ward four, because the other one, sixty-five and mine was seventy-eight or something, I think. Seventy-seven. So I mean, it nearly doubled the election by putting that on a November ballot. I think that that's all of the purpose to, to try to push for this. I mean. You go from ten percent to twenty percent of people coming out to vote. Imagine where that could actually lead to as well.
I agree with you on that.
Councilmember Stevens.
I agree with the intent. I just think we have a lot of work to do. Because knowing what Eddie and the Cesar have to go through at each legislative session is non-trivial. And they're not looking to go do more work and we have to do all the work for it. So I'm not in favor of this right now. I do think we ought to do our homework, get it all lined up. So we can present it next time. I just don't think there's enough time to do the work.
And I might counter to that as well, that I'll be in Austin during the legislative session and. Happy to, to push this. And I think there's already bills out there that it's paste and copy. You know, fill in the blank rather than Fort Stockton, we fill in Alpine. So. If we want something like this, I think this is the time to be shooting for it. But I understand, you know, we got to wait two more years if we don't do it.
We have other water to carry, we want them to carry as well. So. There's only so much time they got to spend in the city of Alpine.
Yeah, a lot of these, they get thrown on the local consent or type agendas as well. So they're like, they're like, if you do it and you ask, it's like, everybody's in favor. These are the things where they get to be like, pass my ten local bills, you, I'll pass your ten. It's stuff that's just real simple. It's like, and if we all are asking for it, which it doesn't seem like it right now, but if we all were, it would be something that we would do. Yeah.
One question made. Then this, if this passed, general election becomes November, special election becomes May? Or no? General, what, what, what would be a general and a special election?
So if the special election, when it's just outside our local.
Okay, which, so the general would be November.
Yeah, so if it's, so we have our general election November, but then we want to do a charter amendment. If that's a special election.
A general is anything for your officers in the sequence that they're regularly scheduled and anything outside of that is a special election.
Yeah, so that could be any month, right?
Measure or a vacancy.
At any time. It doesn't have to be May.
It can always be on a uniform date, which is May or November.
Oh, it can be.
The only one that has to be at the one with your general has to always be placed at the same time.
I was going to say a couple of things just lastly on this is that Mr. Stone is right. Triple B, people show up for it. That's absolutely true. We're already pushing a deal up to the state. But I would just counter as well on like, if people. Think it's important they would show up in May and they don't. And I mean. Where it comes back to me as well is if we go out for a bond or debt in any way. It almost scares me when we had a fifty-fifty vote from the school in the public school system, which a lot of people get behind. That barely passed. A motivated voter that shows up at that time might be more apt to vote for, to issue debt. When we actually need it as opposed to a general one. I mean, I can't argue on it. Get more voters out there and everything else. The intent is absolutely right. But going out for debt kind of does scare me.
I make, I make motions to try to do the right thing.
Any other discussions?
Disappointing.
Let's vote.
Hi.
Against.
Hi.
Hi.
No.
Hey, City Secretary. Resolution twenty-two-four dash O eight dash O seven has failed with Councilmember. Steffron and Olivas voting in favor, council members. Now, Councilmember Stone and Councilmember Escovedo voting in favor. Council.
Change her vote if she wants to.
Nance and Councilmember Stevens voting against. Means I'm getting tired. So that must mean it's time to finish this. Okay. So executive reports, City Secretary, please sit ten minutes on the timer. All right, so just real quick, I want to remind you guys, we've been doing so well with not using acronyms because so many residents, people watching. Don't know what we're talking about when we say R or CPI or whatever else, all those, those specialized acronyms. Everybody, every field has their acronym. So keep, keep up the good work with that. Also, it's budget season. Be sure to explain how you arrive at your calculations. A lot of people are intimidated by math and it dates back to. When they were in elementary school. So especially when discussing percentages, how did you calculate that percentage? Because they can be calculated in different ways. And what you're looking at. And then also, if you state statistics and any kind of data, make sure you let us know, where did you get that? What was the website? Hopefully it's plural and make sure that it's a reputable website, dot org, dot gov, something of that nature. All right, and that's it for me. City Secretary, city manager, ten minutes on the clock, please.
Water infrastructure, we continue to work with the engineers on data collection. And we're trying to schedule and coordinate for them to come back out here. We've also requested additional assistance from them for the lead-in copper. And we do have a deadline of October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And it has been made clear to staff that this is one deadline we cannot miss. On the wastewater infrastructure, really exciting. The RFP has gone out. We are extending it based on the federal guidelines of posting it for more than twenty-one days. The deadline to submit proposals is August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. We currently have four interested parties. For those who have not been in the request for proposal world, this is exciting. And our streets, we have the final executed Texas mobility grant agreement. And they are now pending payment, which will be set for discussion at the next meeting because the idea was to utilize the reserves for capital improvement streets. To cover this mobility grant. And we've completed several sections of country club. The next section includes streets in the northwest part of Alpine. Our goal is to complete forty-two additional blocks within this area. Our hot box is still pending delivery. The new estimated delivery is the third week of August. On the employee compensation, we have completed the employee surveys with roughly eighty percent of employees. Submitting but may not participate. Unfortunately, several of them submitted blank forms. So that was a little discouraging, I'm not going to lie. That was a bad day for me. We are encouraging participation. And the supervisors have completed what they could for their reviews at about ninety percent. And so we're kind of excited on that. Now they're just taking all that information and they'll start kind of analyzing it and putting some stuff together. And I have reached out to them. They have submitted. It's going to be several chapters as the employee compensation. Gets summarized together. And so we're looking at some of the feedback and things and having conversations to, to see what direction we're going to go.
All right, and City Council, you can ask questions on any of these items that she has addressed and that would not be a violation of TALA.
Oh. I really have a question, just stating the water infrastructure. If you, if you noticed, the voters last November voted in a one billion. Amount of money for water infrastructure. That came out what it's going to be. I think it's a hundred and thirty million on ninety-ten loans for cities our size, two thousand to ten thousand people. There's going to be a good chance for a ninety-ten loan on that. And then Swift loans as well.
Nice.
And this is where we definitely want engineering plans. So when we submit, we're not scrambling to decide what the profit is.
Let's not miss it either, right?
Anything else?
On the water infrastructure, when's the next big data information we're going to have?
So I know we have some scheduled time. Johnny's team. It's coordinating with the team to go out into the field to actually do some of what has been asked by our engineers. Getting that scheduled and set up, sitting down with Andy again, saying, okay, what is our next step so that I can come back with a vote? We're still moving through the process. It's just been slower.
But realistically, we're probably talking September or October.
I would definitely say September.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we're moving on to council member comments. City Secretary, please put one minute on the clock for each council member. And we're going to go this direction. Councilmember Stevens. Okay, Councilmember Escovedo. Councilmember Nance. No comments?
I want to thank these three gentlemen. They've been very patient, listening to all of us. So thank you for being here.
Great, thank you. All right, Councilmember Stone.
Want to say, well, I love working with all y'all and thank you for being here. I'm disappointed that we didn't try to expand democracy and voter turnout here tonight. I think that's the way that's framed. I do appreciate working with y'all. Thanks again.
Thank you. All right, and with that, that brings us to item number fourteen, executive session pursuant to chapter five-five-one. Of the Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time. Is deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item or to receive advice from attorney. And permitted by law, tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point oh seven two, no, oh seven one. Excuse me, so five-five-one point oh seven one. To discuss the possible sale and acquisition of property for long-term overall city goals. And planning, including city-owned structures. May I get a motion to adjourn into executive session? May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. See you none, let's vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
City Secretary, all council members voted unanimously to move into executive session. The time is currently nine thirty-six P M. Okay, so thank you guys for being here. And you can return after executive session to see if there's any improvement if you desire.
I'll say join us on Zoom.
May I move that we pause executive session and move back into general session?
May I need a second?
Second one.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's vote all in favor of closing executive and moving into open.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
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 City Secretary, that passes unanimously for us to go back into open session.
May I propose no exact action from executive session.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote, no action.
Aye.
Aye.
City Secretary, there is no action after executive session and with that we are adjourning at 10:25.
Holy come on.
P. M.